And then, the last time we met, an estimate for GDP growth was negative ten to twenty-five percent for the second quarter. Since then Goldman Sachs has predicted that they're expecting a decline of up to thirty-four percent in the second quarter of this year. So, that is the background. And I just saw that the state has recently released their consensus estimate as well. So, a lot of people are in the same business that we're in right now. Just an overview of the general fund impact of this downturn. Right now, we're predicting two million dollars in decreases from sales tax and interest earnings, two point eight from fees and rents, and three point two from other revenue sources. Another bit of information I've picked up since the last meeting two weeks ago is that electricity consumption has been declining across the country. And as of right now, on the central grid, the decline in electricity consumption stands at negative at eight percent. So, that's another thing to consider.
Tell that to my kids.
They're all plugged in. Yeah. So, anyhow, as far as revenue goes, this is our calendar for checking back in on revenue. For April, we have already received the gas tax distribution notice from the state of Kansas, and that was exactly what was budgeted because it was for a period before this started. The ones with three Xs are the things that we're expecting a change due to economic conditions. So, we'll keep, continue to keep everybody updated as we receive that revenue. So, just a pause point here to see if anybody has any questions about this update and expenditure trends.
So, we talk a lot about kind of our, our lack of revenue, the decrease in revenue that we're going to be getting, all the changes that you showed on your last graph. Somewhat tied to it is the cost of doing business, obviously. Are we looking at, well, on a global scale, I'm sure, but even on a national scale, a defl, any sort of deflation in the CPI? Or, you can, I mean, so then again, not products, goods and services would be less expensive, you know, ultimately. Will that help us in this? I know that tax earnings are going to be down and everything, but will, will a deflation help us?
A decrease in, we've already received the moving average CPI for developing the 2021 budget for next year because, as you remember, the CPI is how the tax lid is calculated. So, a negative CPI would actually be, it would impact in that way as we calculate the tax lid, but I think it's capped at zero. Is that correct? I, maybe, it might be. So, yeah, so that would, it might be capped, but that, that, that's the first thing that comes to mind, in my opinion. The other thing, as far as the cost of delivering services, commodities might be less expensive, but I think for a lot of the city services that we do, because of social, social distancing, it might be more expensive to provide the service. So, but the cost of fuel certainly declined, and we'll include that in our modeling.
I, I will note, we're locked in with union contracts, which assumed a different environment. And so, you'd have to have agreed, agreement to reopen those, or otherwise, where those are locked in costs. And so, those are, we don't get helped in that regard. And then also, we just continue to lose more in interest earnings.
Well, I, at this point, I would never, I would not like to, I'm not suggesting we open those contracts up. You know, we, we've got contracts, and I like to honor those, but, you know, I think fuel is one of those things, although I think we're locked into a fuel contract as well.
Actually, we're, we're not locked in right now because the price is so low that we can't be locked in. So, we're just buying off the spot market currently.
Okay.
Right. So, this, this section is to review what we've been doing with what we regard as a strategic management model. We've been using that term for about the last fifteen years, and we've continued to improve it and add to it over time. So, so that everyone's on the same page because you guys are going to get to know the budget better than you ever imagined over the next few years. That's what this exercise is for. So, our strategic management model has five components. The first is financial forecasting. The second element is performance measurement, which is a look back at prior year activity, and then a look forward with targets. Zero-based budgeting, which is really looking at the mission statements and what we do, capital project prioritization, and of course, resident engagement. So, on performance measurement, we really started this program, this program has, in this current iteration, we've been doing it for about eleven years. Today, we have an inventory of four hundred performance measures. There are a combination of outcome measures, measures of community conditions, resident feedback, and of course, we use extensive benchmarking to compare ourselves to peers, regulatory agencies, or people we have contracts with, and also best practices in the industry. So, I'm going to show you two performance measures, just as examples of what we do in that program. The first one is the gold standard for the fire department, which is fires confined to room of origin for one and two-family residential structures. This is one, it, you know, it, it has pretty similar outcomes from year to year, and it's probably, I, I don't want to go out on a limb, but this is one, people, this is probably an activity that's still occurring at the same rate that maybe it had been in the past. Or, it could increase because more people are home, I'm not quite sure. But, this next measure is one that I would expect to see significant changes in the outcome for this year, and that's library downloadable circulation for two reasons. One, people cannot borrow hard copy materials right now as the libraries are closed. And then, the library's aggressively been promoting their downloadable materials. So, that's one that I would expect is going to be quite a bit different in 2020 than the target. So, we started the zero-based budgeting effort immediately after the 2017 adopted budget was approved by the city council. The first year, the outcomes associated with it were the mission statement that we have today. We, departments grouped all the services and grouped them by the mission statement, those different groupings of that. And, and also, we had an extensive effort for departments to develop program operating plans that were peer reviewed. And that was, that was quite a bit of engagement on the part of departments. And so, that is how the zero-based budgeting is really, if you were to strip down the organization and start building from scratch, what would you build? And so, that was what that effort was built on the first year. The second year, what we did is we started ranking the services, the departments ranked them within their department, which is in that handout that you have. Also, untouchable activities and rankings were affirmed by the city council almost exactly two years ago today. I think it says April twenty-fourth. And so, some of those things were moved around. And then, we started a prioritization model for the CIP that year before the, that really built upon the community investments plan. Last year, we really improved the prioritization model for the CIP and involved departments and project sponsors in that activity. The budget simulator was launched. We've had social media town halls for a long time, but that's the first time that people could log on and work through a budget. And we had a surplus last year, and we used that to fund innovation investments such as the one whole forestry grapple truck, which should be arriving later this year. So, the criteria for prioritization that we used in 2018, things were designated as a core activity if they were provided directly to residents. Support activities are things that are provided in response to a core activity. So, for example, in the finance department, payroll is a support activity because it's to pay employees, but it, we don't provide it directly to residents. And then, nor, non-core activities were identified that don't align to the departmental mission statement. Also, in 2018, activities were designated as being untouchable. Just a little bit of refresher on that. Activities were designated as being untouchable if there are legal requirements for that activity, if they are intrinsic to a department's existence. And an example of that is, it would be hard to imagine a public works department that doesn't do street maintenance, or park department that doesn't have parks, those sorts of things. And also, the third thing that was designated as untouchable is the leadership of that department. And, just a reminder that a support activity can be considered untouchable. So, back to that example of payroll, that is a support activity that's untouchable. So, I think that one of the tasks ahead of us is to reaffirm or update the listing this year. Things have changed in community preferences probably even before, you know, there's always some shifts, even before COVID-19 came our way. But, also keeping in mind our ability to deliver services in an environment of social distancing, that's going to change things a lot. Also, how critical particular services are in a period of declining revenue, that's another consideration. And there might be some services that change in their ranking or designation as untouchable, just because they'll have a differing level of importance due to the shift we've seen in the economic and public health context during this time. So, the pause point here is, are there services that should be reprioritized in the current environment?
Kind of an open, general question, and a little hard to get your arms around, but what we're looking at is, are there issues that you want to talk about? Any general direction, you know, in the past, when we were in the recession, on-street performance for police and fire was an untouchable. And are there other things like that are on the list that you want to reconsider in terms of touchables or untouchables?
So, just a reminder, this is our untouchable, touchable, right?
So, Bob, can I?
You have sixteen pages.
So, if you can give me guidance right now.
But not everybody on this list is untouchable, right? Only if it says yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
So, can I ask a question, Bob?
Yeah.
Or Elizabeth, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Because I wasn't here when I think this was developed. So, who determined, did department heads determine if someone was untouchable? If I missed it, I'm sorry, but what was the process?
We went through a pretty significant process, started at the department level, went to department directors, then came to the council. And we asked the council during the retreat, if I remember, to endorse or modify, and there were some modifications.
And that was based on a time when we were much more economically stable than we are right now?
But, understanding that we still hadn't fully recovered, we're not back at 2008 levels, and we wanted guidance. This, this was built around an excellence initiative, and the idea was that we were frustrated by what I think we considered to be less than stellar performance in some of our operations, and we knew it's because we were spreading our resources too thin. And so, we were asking the councils to help us focus on areas of excellence, and to say, okay, we're going to move in these areas that are considered untouchable, and strive to do, to, to deliver service levels expected by our residents. And at that time, I was talking about, it was kind of ironic that what I have found being here for the time that I have is that many of our citizens, I think, have what I call suburban service expectations, and that is a higher level of service than what they are able, that we're able to provide because of our financial limitations. So, the idea was, let's narrow what we do and do that well, and meet expectations.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
So, Elizabeth, you want us to have a discussion?
Yeah.
About, are there services that should be reprioritized now?
It may be better, because as Brian said, this list is extensive. It may be better if there are certain areas that you just want to talk to us about, or this will be, we can zero down on this as we go forward. At, at our next retreat, this may be even a more helpful guide. But if there's some things off the top, you know, I go back to 2009, for instance, and 2010, when the council adopted some guiding principles that helped us get through the budget. And this is a, I'd say, a much greater refinement of that.
So, Mr. Mayor, I think it should probably go without saying that our first responders, our police officers, our firefighters should be untouchable. We have seen an increase in domestic violence because of, you know, I think some of the economic and social consequences of the crisis with the virus. The last thing we want to do is take our foot pedal when it comes to ensuring our police officers have what they need to keep our communities safe. In addition to that, our first responders with our police, I mean, excuse me, with our firefighters, they are, have been the ones who are probably one of the most at risk during this situation with the COVID-19. I think it should be almost without saying that they should get preference, and obviously, not, their departments not feel the blunt of any cuts coming forward, not only because they deserve it, but also because they have, they are such a need right now. So, I don't know if you need a motion, or if you're just looking for feedback right now, but I want to make it crystal clear, from my perspective, and probably they expect, the, sorry, did someone, sorry, I thought I, someone just interrupted me, so I want to continue. I want to make it crystal clear, from my perspective, and also from those who are shaking their heads, yes, that we should prioritize our first responders, our EMTs, our firefighters, our police officers, and the staff that support them.
Yeah, if you look at the prioritization ranking, fires on page three, and police is on page twelve.
Let's stay with three for a second, because I think that's a great example.
Yeah. So, I think it matches what you're probably talking about.
Right. Let me, this is how, Mayor, this is how we would interpret what you said, the head nodding, and then, as we go forward and looking at alternatives. And again, we're looking at alternatives, you're ultimately going to decide what our service mix is. But we use this framework, what you've referenced would be item, line items forty-four, which is the actual fire response, that's our on-ground response, our training operations, which reflected in forty-five and forty-six, and then the administration of the department. And then, where we can get creative, and we have been in the past, is how do we better work with the county to reshape our emergency medical response, so that it's being performed in a way that matches resources and expertise. And we, and this was helpful in terms of the council giving us authority to move forward on that in the past. There may be other ways to do code administration, and medical training is, some of that's being picked up by the county. I won't go through all of this, but what I would interpret is that we stay with the untouchables, and that as we look at how we're going to balance the budget, we look at some of the things that are considered to be support services or service areas where maybe someone else can pick up some of the slack.
And, and I didn't mean to interrupt, I was asking, the, the question was asked, we don't have to make a motion and vote today. Today is just feedback.
Right, and today, yeah, right, and you, you, this is a retreat.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, yeah. But this, but I'm looking for significant feedback, right, or general direction. And I think, you know, the mayor was helpful in terms of that.
So, so is it, would it be possible to add another column, so that we can understand, and I appreciate the prioritization, but I wish I had a dollar impact to the side of each one of these to have a better understanding.
Okay, so I'm looking for general policy, I'm looking for policy guidance right now, just general policy, high-level policy guidance. You're going to get, you're going to drill down this next level because we're going to bring decision packages that fall in these categories, right? And they will have dollars attached to it.
But I don't understand any kind of prioritization. But I don't understand any kind of prioritization. Your number is all that I, the prioritization number is all that I have to guide myself. I, I don't understand impact without having, is this a $100,000 deal, is this a million-dollar deal, or at least an estimate or something?
Yeah, I think in some cases, like for example, in the Budget Office, we have multiple things that are listed as different lines and on this document. So, in some cases, it's kind of difficult to break that apart without allocating people's time to it, but then in other cases, it's really straightforward, like Beat Patrol. But Beat Patrol also includes beat coordinators that are within Beat Patrol, so it's kind of harder to pick it apart. But in the budget document, we do include each of these activities are listed on the pages with, like Beat Patrol's a page, or Fire Emergency Response, or Person's Crime. And I think on the Person's Crime example, it's on page 12. Let me see here. So, we have Patrol EMCU, which is part of Person's Crime, homicide is also part of Person's Crime. So, there's multiple things that are part of Person's Crime, and they all work together depending on the caseload, so it's kind of hard to parse, to pull it apart.
We can work on that.
We can get there, we can get there closer, but it's.
But it's hard to make decisions on this thing without understanding what we're looking at.
Well, but I think there's also an element to it that something can be very low cost or no cost and still be an untouchable activity. And that's also something to keep in mind, there are some things that we do that, this is really more of a framework for starting the decision-making process rather than how do I save money.
So, if it's no cost, why would we be discussing it during the budget?
So, and I'm wondering, going forward with the budget in the future, there's over 312 items here. Is it possible that we can get this documentation before we start our two-hour-long meeting?
That's kind of what I thought, too.
Where?
What kind of blind study?
Where, I mean, these are really big budget decisions that are going to have a huge impact to our city, and I think that, like I said, there's about almost 400 items here in size six font that I would like to research and understand the relationships they have with each other so we could have the desired outcome.
Okay, so maybe I, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear in terms of what the expectations are for today. Today, I'm looking for some general policy guidance on this, just things to look at, right? And this provides context for you. I'm not looking for us to drill down through every one of these because that then becomes more of a tactical discussion instead of the strategic discussion. There are items where I'm going to, following this presentation, where we are asking for guidance, and they're mostly items that were keyed up at our last workshop, and you asked for additional information. As you can imagine, it has been, there's a lot of data here, and I know that, and that's why we're doing this in retreat, and trying, not trying to get, I don't want you to try to feel you have to balance the budget right now. What I'm trying to do is get just a general feel of intent, and we're going to provide a lot more detailed information well in advance as we go through deeper discussions on where we're going with the budget.
So, if I, if I understand, I think this list is to help us form ideas around different areas, policy around different areas, not to go in and say, this shouldn't be untouchable, this should be, you know?
Right.
At this point, we will get to that. So, along those lines, and in agreement with the mayor about fire and police, if I was thinking about just a couple of policy things, one is the, looking at the consolidation with the county, it seems like maybe that, I know it's been a high priority, I'm not sure how high of a priority, if that looked like that would perhaps save us or, or serve our constituents better at the same price, that might be something, that would be something to look at. And then in police, and again, I can't tell this from, from looking at this, but I, if I recall last year, when we did this, the Phase Two staffing positions and, and the Broadway Quarter Team that now became part of our regular budget were off in some other account and didn't get into the police budget somehow? Am I, am I not remembering this right?
That was Phase One, I believe.
Was it Phase One? Okay.
Yeah, the Phase One funding came from a different stream.
Yeah, so I want to make sure that we, just again, from thinking about policy and not letting that get lost, those, that that gets put back in when we're looking at this overall, when we actually do get down to the dollars and the positions. So, those are just a couple of, while we're talking about police and fire.
And that, mine might be, policy to me is complex, it's in the weeds, it's complicated, it's not just a vision or idea, it's actually how we execute a vision or idea. So, maybe I'm looking at this wrong when you talk about policy directives and, you know, my request to have this information before we have our meeting, particularly since, you know, you make a comment that this isn't a list of what's, we're going to pick out for untouchables and touchables, but then like column G is all untouchable, question, yes or no.
What is what's all untouchable?
So, the, so I mean, I feel like it was presented that way.
G.
G is an actual column that's asking us if it's.
Oh, G, the column, yeah.
Untouchable or untouchable. So, there appears to be some confusion about what to do with this data, and just a follow-up, but I don't, I don't expect us to shift from this document, but I did email the manager and also the budget director a list of informational requests, such as, what is the total of every employee makes over $100,000, you know, in this organization? What is, pretty much a bunch of stuff that we've utilized to balance budgets in the legislature, I wanted the city equivalent of that. I still haven't received that information and was told that it would be presented to me at this budget conference, and I was hoping that someone could pass me along that requested information so I can help direct the values for the policy which will be made.
It's all in today's presentation.
So, is it in this packet here?
Uh-huh.
Again, I apologize if I just normally need more time to read.
And I don't think we're expected to react on all this information. Day, you're providing this information for us to then take with us and study.
It's an ongoing discussion, right? You, it goes back several years ago, and that was council's direction, that you wanted to be more actively engaged in this policy direction for the budget when you can still make an impact. And that is at the front end, and so, and because of COVID-19, we moved that even up further, so.
What was that direction that was for the, for the council?
Council wanted to be involved in the budget process earlier than they had been in the past. When I got here, the council got the budget in July, it was, and told they had needed to act on it in August.
We had a month, month and a half.
Yeah, and I think a good example, too, about reflecting and thinking about the prioritization list is that last time, two years ago, I remember that we had grouped all, our staff had grouped animal control services all together, and that the city council made the recommendation to break those two things apart, and to make animal field service, animal control field services be an untouchable activity, and that animal shelter services would stay with the same ranking that it had, but not be untouchable, because there's other service delivery models for that. So, that would be kind of the example of maybe the decision-making, you know, just to step through that and say, well, staff sees it from this angle, but as an elected official, I get these phone calls about animal, you know, dogs at large all the time, and I think that should be untouchable, so.
So, you're really looking for just very high-level policy guidance, right?
We'll drill down on all of this later, this, we just wanted a quick pause point here, you've got a little more heavy lifting on other items following.
But that we cannot, that we cannot imagine the organization not having animal control ser, you know, animal control field services, that was the decision that was made, so.
I think it goes, I think it goes back to our core principles, we just talked about them here, police and fire, right?
Water.
What did I say?
No, I said, I'm adding water.
And then those conditions for living, well, water, you know, park and recreation, I think those are quality of life things, those are the big principal items that are going to stay true to who we are and what we've always focused on.
And if I can add on to that, like, one of the things that comes to mind is housing, because there are housing facilities, so we have to have people there to be able to maintain them and to make sure that people's safety, so, and then, you know, even with transit, for, it's a, to get people who are providing essential services in a time like this to be able, you know, the queue line, not as much, it's a nicety, and I love it.
And that's, I think, how we have it ranked, probably, so.
So, just again, not to be a stickler to my request, I just went through those 50 slides, I don't find the information I requested two weeks ago.
Marriage right there, in that packet, right in your left hand.
This one, the 50 slides?
Right there, right there, no, right there.
This one?
Yep.
Thank you.
So, I would.
Oh, go ahead, Rand, I've already talked.
I just wanted to add that arts and cultural services, in addition to what the mayor said, as well as park and rec are important, and oftentimes, arts is something that is not as expensive, but has a big benefit in the community, as well as MAPCD, tall grass and weed season is here, and that's a lot of the emails and concern I get is making sure we can get those things addressed and make sure that blight is addressed as well, so those areas, I think, are also important in addition to fire and police.
And I think that, Brian already talked about parks, I think we're going to have to make some decisions about pools this summer and what we do in then moving forward, we have a great plan, but how do, what do we do now? But I think those kinds of things, like arts and culture, parks and pools, I think we have to think about libraries. One of the things I've got the most complaints about during this shutdown is that I can't go to the library. And Cindy Berner's been great about, you know, when I send those to her, about redirecting people to help them for the things they're finding, but I don't think that's a long-term solution, probably, even though I think we've probably learned a lot about things that people will be able to now get online that they didn't know about. But libraries, I think, in that branch library study, and then streets, streets is always something that we get complaints about, and I think that has to stay high, and then our, just our community service, that outreach to our constituents, to me, is something, you know, people rely on our neighborhood centers to be able to, you know, they won't ever come to City Hall, but they'll stop in, you know, in, in our neighborhood centers and feel very comfortable. And I don't, I hate to lose that connection with the community.
So, the bad news for Mark and Elizabeth, we've mentioned every department except finance. You guys can go home.
Guys got the story.
Yeah, we've got the support services thing locked up.
I knew that, big support services.
So, a lot of the things that we do, there's a statutory requirement, so. And one, just one last thing that we stepped through when we were doing this two years ago, is we thought, too, is what services would it be hard to imagine a city without providing these services? And sometimes, you know, like, it'll be provided by a county, and you know they'll have like a county library, not a city library, or things like that. But, I mean, that's why convention center might be kind of a surprise, but it's hard to imagine a city of our size without having a convention center. Maybe some, you know, there might be different service delivery models, but it's hard to imagine not having one, though.
So, we mentioned, or I think Councilmember Tittle mentioned, or no, maybe it's Vice Mayor Clayco mentioned consolidation of the fire. I mean, have we gotten to the point where we should look at regional transit authority or regional water authority? And create partnerships and spreading that base beyond just us? So, those are opportunities.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's a good thing, so, to think about that.
Are you all ready to move on to capital budgeting, or?
Have we touched everything that you want to know about, Bob? I mean, is there any area we haven't touched that you would like?
Yeah, this is an early introduction, no, I, I've got.
Okay.
Just some homework for us, is what he's saying.
I know.
And Bob, one other area that I would like to look at is, I know that at one point we took animal control, and we put it into the police department hoping to find or gain efficiencies, maybe some organizational, some organizational structure and discipline. Don't know if it's something we want to address right now through this budgetary cycle, but I'm, you know, I'm still hearing a ton about it, and so, maybe looking at that, are we really gaining the efficiencies, and at the same time, while gaining those efficiencies, are we serving the public better through that?
Can you just make that go away, James?
Right now, people are adopting a lot of animals.
Yeah, that's true.
I know, it's a, it's a tough subject, and it's not a subject that has any easy answers, but we have to at least make sure that our efficiencies, that we're gaining, or if we are, and if we are, if they're serving the public better.
And that's an interesting service as far as the citizen survey goes, because there's just a lot of services that we provide that people are just, it's just they're difficult services to provide, and that's why we do them, right? So.
Yeah, it's not a public, private sector.
Yeah, no, it's a difficult service, that's why we do it, and we just do the best that we can, so.
Well, if, if there was a private model for providing those services, it would be interesting to explore, maybe we have, anyway, and that would save the police budget as well.
Yeah.
Yes.
Not for lack of trying.
I know, oh, I know, believe me, I know.
Probably going to have to be done somewhere.
I saw the look on your face.
Well, I, yeah, I, you know, we thought we had a model, and it's been rejected by our partners.
Yeah.
Is that Baltimore?
Sorry.
Is that Baltimore?
Well, actually, that was where we started, and that was with the rescues.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Helping us, but then we actually had the Humane Society that.
All right, are you all ready to move on?
Yeah, let's move on.
Okay. That was really smooth. So, okay, so now we're switching gears and moving into capital projects. So, the CIP is generally adopted at the same time as the budget, it's a 10-year document, just an overview of how the economic downturn impacts the CIP. We, at this point, are expecting more property tax and special assessment delinquencies, that's something that happens during an economic downturn. We're also expecting sales tax revenue erosion, just like the impact on the general fund. And right now, we're working on a short-term reevaluation of projects and the potential postponement of new projects so that we can enhance liquidity and reduce the potential for increased debt. So, just like the decisions a lot of people are making right now. On the debt service fund side, that's our other taxing fund, like the general fund. Property taxes fund most of the general obligation at-large debt, so that's for things like parks and facilities. They, like we've been saying, we expect the impact of the property tax to lag, but there is the threat of increased delinquencies, lower TIF valuations in the near term, and higher TIF delinquencies. So, to provide some other context of the environment that we're already in before this downturn occurred, general obligation at-large debt levels have been projecting to rise and approached the benchmark in 2022, and I have the slide on the next page. So, to avoid exceeding the benchmark, it's important to consider project deferrals. So, this is our slide here, and so you'll see it peaks in 2022. The other thing to keep in mind is this projection was made based on increasing valuation per property tax, so evaluation declines in 2022 or future year, that would definitely impact this graph.
Close, making it closer to the benchmark, correct?
We'd hope it'd be close.
Pardon?
I mean, I think that's why we're talking about project deferrals.
But just to be clear, in case you guys watch.
Yeah, no, I think, yeah, it just depends on what, for 2021 property tax, that's based on the evaluation notices that were mailed earlier this year. So, there'll be some people who, who protest, and so that will be a little different when we get the notice in June than what people got in the mail in March. But 2022 property taxes will be based on real estate activity that's occurring in 2020. So, it's, it's kind of a different environment than what happened in 2019.
So, Elizabeth, I have a question on this. So, this, you said it doesn't take into account if there were property D evaluations?
Yeah, this is, so this slide, this graph is out of the 2019 adopted CIP.
Okay.
So, everything we're talking, yeah, so everything we're referencing today with regard to projects and financial projections is based on the CIP that was adopted in August.
No deferrals.
And so, we're talking about changes to that.
Yeah, right here, no, no, no deferrals of CIP in.
Yeah, this graph, so this graph is as if we did the entire CIP that you all adopted last year, and that the revenue projections were the same as what we were forecasting last summer.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So, other projects in the CIP in 2020, not all of them have been presented to the city council yet for initiation, that's that process where they come to you one by one. And then there's also some projects that have been initiated that haven't been bid yet. And. In addition to the 2020 projects, staff also looked through 2021 and 2022 projects for potential postponement. Just to refresher on the CIP prioritization model, we looked at the scores, and in addition to some other factors, when we reviewed all these projects, there's 20, about a fifth is based on the community investments plan, a quarter is based on other planning processes, 30% is based on financial considerations, which is things like return on investment, and then a quarter is based on other considerations, which is things like the decision support tools and engineering studies, things along those lines. So when we reviewed these projects, three of the main things that we looked at for moving projects forward as proposed or deferring them were leverage, so that's funding from external partners, maintenance, and safety. And so safety refers to public safety projects, or also could be that an asset is in a condition that is unsafe. So projects that staff has recommended for continuing as programmed, which these are just a couple of examples, but the North Junction is highly leveraged, and we already have agreements with KDOT for that. Bridge inspections, that's a mandated activity, and it's tied directly to public safety. And the tennis center is kind of an unusual one to be on this list, but we have outside funding from USTA for that in place, and there's, there's a schedule for using that funding, so.
What percentage of that is?
I think it's maybe a quarter million.
How much?
I think it might be a quarter million.
But I think what he was maybe.
How big is the project? I think the project might be about a million.
Is it being funded entirely by the grant funds?
No, I think it's about 20% grants.
20%?
Fire apparatus replacement, because it ties back to public safety and our ability to respond. And then police radios, those replacements are very important for interoperability. So, so that one, and so that's just a intro to the list that you have that's blue and yellow. And it's also a good time to point out, there are four or five blue projects on this list that are new. All the projects on this list are things that were approved in the CIP last year, but there are very, a handful of blue projects on this list that staff feels should move forward because of special considerations regarding public safety, or, in the case of the project on page three, its relationship to the whole stadium project. So those are the only new ones. On the, on the deferral side of the, of the framework, some of the criteria that we use are things that are projects that are enhancements or proactive replacements. Projects that are completely locally funded, there's no contract in place or outside funding or granting agency. We also made a consideration for projects that are shovel-ready for potent, excuse me, potential stimulus funding. During the last round of stimulus funding, I guess about 10 years ago, that was something that when the funding came in, you had to move very quickly to get the projects going. So it's important to not move projects forward when you could have funding coming shortly thereafter. And another consideration, of course, is we, staff felt that it's probably not a good idea to initiate projects that have additional maintenance costs. So some examples of deferrals would be the library enhancements, the fire storage facility, which will be ready to move forward later this year, the commerce area improvements, which is an enhancement project, and comprehensively finding was just an enhancement. So there's more of those on your list in there, yellow.
What's that total? Oh, the next slide.
Sometimes, sometimes we get these things right, right? So we've identified 29, 29 million in projects between 2021 and 23 that could be deferred. And, you know, our focus is on those non-leveraged projects, is what we're focusing on, so. So, and then on the local sales tax side, in the CIP, as you remember, we shifted a lot of local sales tax funding to street projects. And it's a little, the good news for this exercise is street project scheduling is a little more flexible than freeway scheduling, because it tends to be all locally funded. There's a little more flexibility for the sake of this exercise. And just a reminder, LST and the general fund, they receive the same amount of sales tax, it's just split in half. So 2 million is expected to be the drop in both funds for this year. Deferring projects helps to erode fund reserves and also prevents increasing debt levels. And there's $8 million in projects in local sales tax that have been identified. A lot of the street projects that you see on the list, a lot of them actually have a lot of GO in them and a little less local sales tax, just because of the, the type of project they are. Like the commerce street improvements, that has a lot of GO in it. So, another pause point. So we've gone through this list for deferral, and I know this is first time you've seen this, and this is the first time, I think, that we've ever presented a big list like this to the city council for consideration. So we don't, this is our first time. So with that in mind, either some direction on what, if the framework that we've used is adequate, or also some feedback on particular projects, is what we're looking for. And this doesn't need to happen, I don't think, immediately, but it's something to think about.
So on page two, under public safety, the police patrol station deferral, is that the east one or the west one? Because we haven't bid out the east one yet. All we've done is bid the design.
Right, this, this, this funding is for design and construction for the west station, but you're correct that the east station isn't on this list because it's already been initiated, but that design bidding could, that could be deferred as well.
So we could still determine whether we proceed with that this year?
Yes.
The plan is, right now, to proceed with it this year.
That's correct.
I think they're ready for June.
Groundbreaking.
Or June, yeah, for, not groundbreaking.
These, these, if I remember right, these years are the years that these are currently planned for, not deferred to.
Right.
Right, okay.
And this is what was in the CIP last year. I know that people have already been talking about moving things around since then, but we wanted to be consistent and just refer back to that document.
And the, and the total of the new items amounts to about 13 million, if I read all blue, roughly.
Yeah, the Amaden one, too, they say that that could be, moves back another year to 2023, but that's one, the Amaden Bridge is one that in the most recent, most recent bridge inspections, it indicates that it needs to be replaced.
Okay.
So.
So these are just, they're new, but you guys haven't made recommendations whether to proceed or defer.
No, no, but we, they're on the list just because they're part, they're part of the decision-making.
So what about the fire station, or the city hall elevator and the fire station alerting? Could those be deferred as well, or are they mission-critical?
The elevators, I think they've done a recent inspection, and there hasn't been an overhaul in a long time. And so that could be, the project could be less.
Hey, we're on the first floor.
Yeah, yes.
It's a priority to us.
I always joke that if, you know, if this project were to come along, I'd probably want it to be a high priority, but this project can be less, this is for, I think that it can be $250,000 less to not do the inside remodel of the elevator cabs, but this project has been deferred to probably too long, and probably should have been in the CIP long ago.
Okay, and then the fire station alerting?
Alerting system, I would, are you from, I'm, I'm less familiar with, I cannot speak as an expert on that, but we can get you more information.
Okay, and then the last?
What is it? Not, not in detail, just.
It's the system.
At the fire stations, I mean, is just what it says?
Yeah, I think so.
When there's a fire, is there a alarm that goes off?
I think it's how they're connected to dispatch.
Okay.
And it needs, I don't, I don't think that they, they have one, it's, it's like radios, it needs to be updated from time to time, I think is more of what it is, so that it's up to date and reliable and.
Okay.
And then the last one, you've already talked about the Texas Street one, the one in my district, 13th Street, Ridge to Taylor.
Yes.
I thought we'd already redone that road like four years ago, so is this a?
So this is a small project, it's, it's, it's for turning lanes around Northwest High School.
I know which one you're talking about.
And I think it would, this is the 13th Street, and I think it would be a partnership with this, initially, it was supposed to be a partnership with the school district. We don't, you know, of course, they're probably having the same meetings that we are, but it's a, it's more of like a spot project.
I know which one it is, thank you.
Perfect.
I missed this, did you, you did talk about Texas Street already?
That is, yeah, that's a connection to the stadium, I think.
This is just from where it ends now, to, out to McLean, right?
I think it's to reestablish 21.
We would put it in the CIP, and then we would build it on demand?
Yeah.
Based on the development?
Yeah.
Okay, so my question, the, the news, are they in that 29 million, or?
The news.
The new, the blues?
Oh, no, they're, it's, the 29 million, yeah.
So just the yellow are in that 29 million?
Just the yellow, uh-huh.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I just wanted to make sure that we kept them on the list, in case we went through this whole exercise, and then we go, oh, surprise, we have new things to add, and.
Yeah, no.
Little shaky, yeah.
I just want to make sure what I.
So, and of course, departments have far more new projects that they'd always like to request, but as a group, we decided that these were the ones that needed to move forward.
Remember, we were just starting the CIP review process at the staff level when COVID hit, so we accelerated this discussion, and I guess what I'm looking for is the framework, does it make sense to you? Are there any projects that you want, where you want more information? And then are we, are there any projects in yellow that you have some concerns about initially that you, again, want us to talk about or bring back to you? What I need to do is, I'm trying to manage our cash flow, so I'm trying to keep projects from getting to the point where you're backed into a corner, right? And we've, we're, you're faced with bids.
So I do have one, and most of you are aware of this, it might not seem like a big project, and these really large projects, we put all the library enhancements in, to deferred projects. And you all know that we've been working on the Evergreen project, and we have, so there's a million dollars from the Hyatt money, and then there's the 650 that's in the Evergreen library enhancements, and that whole pot of money was to be used to renovate the Evergreen library building and move the neighborhood center and some other co-located partners into that. This money, the 650, this is an unusual situation, because we just, we haven't initiated, initiated that 650, because we've been paying the project so far out of the million first. If we separate those two, this was to be used for roof repairs, actually, I think a whole new roof, and ventilation, the HVAC system that needs to be replaced. So if, if we separate those two projects, what we do is we redo the inside of a building that has a bad roof and poor ventilation. So to me, it makes sense to not defer this one, because again, it's attached to a project. And if you look at what Elizabeth was saying, so leverage, so you might not consider this external leverage, but there is some external partners that are working on this, and again, we have a million dollars from another source, and I do think that the asset becomes unsafe with a, with a roof that needs to be replaced and putting new, new things in there, so just my pitch on that one.
Elizabeth, on Watson Park, you've got it listed twice, one with deferred, one with perceived, but the perceived has no dollars.
Oh, no. I'll check on that one. I think, I think they said they could do some, I need to update it, I think out of the 2021 or 2020, they said they could, some of it needs to be done, and then some of it can be deferred, but I'll double-check on it. Because it's like the Evergreen, their, their parts, gears are connected to each other.
There's another library issue, again, on page two, just a little, a few items down from Evergreen is Linwood. We've now negotiated a tentative lease agreement for relocating the Linwood branch, but we put that on hold as soon as we got into this crisis. It will relieve us of the million-dollar capital expense. We have some technology expenses that I think we have to do, but what we'll, but what we would do is enter into a long-term lease agreement for this space, which includes recovery of tenant improvements, I think, as part of the lease cost. So it's, I could, we could relieve you here on the CIP, but I want you to be aware that there's an equivalent dollar amount over a long period of time that's going to be paid out, similar if we had debt, because we're going to be leasing that space. And the question is, do we just put that on hold, or do we move forward with the project?
James?
Well, obviously, the, I feel like that library is, is going, the schools, everything else that's really looking forward to having the ability to serve with some of those lower-income kids, in that library was going to be phenomenal. At the same time, I definitely understand the need to defer costs, but the lease, how is that going to affect negotiating another lease if we do not enter into this current lease?
Right, we don't know, and if that space gets leased out from under us.
Then we don't have a location.
I don't know if it would in this climate, but at some point, we'd have to renegotiate or find another space, right, if it gets leased.
And the lease would have, that would be additional, we'd save on CIP, but we'd.
You're committing on.
Operations. And I guess, when we get into that, okay, how much is that, would be really the question for us to, to, you know, move forward.
If, we had talked about whether or not to just continue this process and bring it forward, allow the park board, I mean, the library board to, to act on it and bring it to the council, and at that time, we can give you that information.
It would be better to have more information on, on what that's going to look like.
Yep.
At least at this point, it's saving us in the CIP, and we have savings there, but operationally, we don't even know what it looks like operationally yet, so. I would ask then, that we would at least defer it until we have numbers to see if, if it's something we can.
Yeah, we've got those, so we'll go ahead.
Is there a way also with that, because I know the folks at Linwood are highly interested in this, to kind of get that information presented to them, whether it's the senior center, normally I'd be meeting with them once every other month, but COVID or not, but they were all generally interested in what a potential relocation would look like, as well as what's going to be left in that space? So as we're making that decision, maybe have a presentation for them as well?
Yeah, and Councilmember Johnson, I'm glad you brought that up, because it's been, I've been consistent in saying myself that, and so has our director of libraries, that there's going to be a reading room there still, won't be full library services, but there will be a reading room and an open room for seniors to use, for coffee and playing cards, or.
Chocolate doughnuts.
Chocolate doughnuts. But not taking that space away, because there's really no, not really any cost savings by closing it, really. And so leaving it open as a service for them made sense, so. I'd love to, to join you at one of your meetings with them, just let me know.
So we'll bring back, and we've got a floor plan already for the Linwood space, so we can share that as well for the new space. We'll go ahead and provide all that Linwood information. I didn't hear any pushback back on Evergreen 650, so we would allow that project to move forward. Unless I hear differently, the rest of the yellows would be on hold until we get deeper into the budget process, to give you flexibility, yeah.
I have a question. Building energy improvements, I know, I know there'd be a capital cost with that of 400,000. Are the operating, is the operating side of that, would it come down? I mean, would, you know, would we get savings in operations if we made this $400,000 investment?
I'll have to go back and look, I'm thinking that it was a payback over a little longer period of time, like a 10-year, something like that, if I remember correctly. We, we did a lot of the easy paybacks previously, but we'll, I'll look at that.
And, and that is a good point, the return on investment may be worth it, right? And if there's other, you know, projects.
And, and that is a good point. The return on investment may be worth it, right? And if there's other, you know, projects that are similar to that, where if we put a little money out, it's going to save us.
Yeah.
That's a thought.
Given where we are though, you know, an eighteen, twenty-four month problem.
Yeah.
If it doesn't pay back quickly.
We need the money now, not then.
Yeah.
Okay.
One, one last question for me. Um, on the, is that page three, the pedestrian crossing enhancements? Um, so in talking with some members of Bike Walk Wichita and a few other people, is this the painting crosswalks or is this?
I think that's on down.
No, this, this pet, the ped corridor safety improvements or the ped crossing, which one?
Ped crossing enhancement.
Okay, that is to add connections where ones don't exist today. It's different than maintenance.
Okay.
I think they've been focused on the maintenance efforts around schools, right? But this is to add, maybe there needs to be a crossing from one bikeway to another bikeway and this gets you across an arterial or something like that.
Okay.
And they have a list of those that they, they would like included in this.
Yeah, I have it in my notebook over there. Yeah.
These are.
Yeah. But on that, on a little bit down, Councilmember Johnson, is the school district safety improvements.
Uh-huh.
And the idea would be to defer for just this year, but to keep it as is for twenty-one and twenty-two. And that's for things, the engineering in the school district meet together pretty regularly on how to get kids to and from school. But they're not meeting right now and schools are closed and so forth. So that's related to those, that type of project as well.
Jeff, you've spent a lot of time talking about CIP. Are you, is the framework okay for you here in terms of what we're looking on deferrals?
Want me to go back?
No.
Question. Those are the.
Just, just as long as we have as much data as we can get.
Yeah.
Just, just like the tennis center. If, if it's something, you know, we know exactly what we'd be giving up if we didn't do it shovel ready.
Yep.
This is very helpful, having it outlined like this. We really appreciate that.
We'll get it. You'll have a chance to refine this as we go forward, but this is, we're going to at least stop things in process now. So we have some capacity, some capacity, which could help you on the operating side.
Yeah, thank you.
All righty.
On, I thought I had one more, but now I have one more. Uh, on Douglas, the Washington to Grove improvements, would we be pushing that into twenty twenty-three?
You know, when we have things as deferrals on this list, we're not really sure when, when they'll be deferred to. It's really just a matter of putting them on hold for now. And not initiating them as planned and continuing to look at economic conditions and our revenue. So.
I just brought that up.
That's a really great non-answer. Sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry.
But.
I mean, there are a lot of projects that have, you know, significant community interest and that's one of them. And, you know, I know they even wanted those advanced originally.
Yeah.
Yeah, the complaint I heard was that we pushed that off three or four times already. I don't know the validity of how many, but pushed off from two thousand nine, so.
Right.
I just want to be able to give them a concrete answer of we're deferring now to a specific year.
Commerce is the. That'll come back to you in the whole document.
Okay.
Yeah. And that project also to keep in mind, that has a lot, that's one of those projects that has a lot of GO. It has some LST for the curb-to-curb part, but it has a lot of GO in it too. So that is also part of our decision-making. And you mentioned Commerce Street. That's another one. It has a lot of GO. So.
Let's move on.
All ready? Okay. So the last section, this is the last third of what we have today, is referencing this document, which is a lot of follow-up issues from the last time that everybody was together. Um, many of these things are tactical. I have grouped them into three areas. Um, the first is um, tactical shifts to balance a budget. The second group is really responses to the current operating environment. And the third group of things is um, you know, aligning to being a well-run city, which is part of our mission statement. So just that, you know, it's really hard right now. I feel that there's just so much going on and so much news coming at us. And just to pause and to keep, what I'm using as my guiding framework right now, as I deal with all this information, is that things that we need to focus on are ensuring a balanced budget in twenty twenty. Um, making sure that we avoid dramatic service delivery reductions if and when the recession is prolonged. Um, I think that's a possibility. Um, and then also adapting our current operations to reflect the stay-at-home order and recovery, which could involve some social distancing for quite some time. Um, I'm an expert on none of these things, but just, this is what I'm using to digest all this information right now. So the numbering on these slides matches the numbering on the issue papers, and so I'll just be introducing the concepts today. Um, some of them are things that we've already, you've already talked about, so you might be prepared to provide immediate feedback. The issue number one is vacant full-time position savings. Um, then, um, similar to that is furloughs. Number two is city payments to organizations, and number three is public art and capital projects. On number one, on vacant position savings, um, we always budget savings due to turnover in the budget every year. Um, you'll see it on budget pages for the larger departments as a negative number. Um, we also budget it um, for the whole organization. Um, a hiring freeze is something that we have done in the past during an economic downturn. It is a swift approach that immediately slows spending. But as a downturn continues, we need to have a framework to guide hiring for essential positions. Because at some point, I mean, right now, the position vacancies that we have, we might be able to proceed with those vacancies, but at some point, essential positions are going to be vacated. So the recommendation that we have in the slide and on the issue paper is to continue the hiring freeze and develop a framework for limited hiring for selected positions.
So. I'm doing a, using this documents, I got it right up here.
Yeah, I understand.
Cut about six point five one million in a budget, uh, I think without really having much effect on uh, the day-to-day lives of our citizens. I just want to make sure I got my numbers right. Uh, if we eliminated or took the money and froze all the vacant, vacant full-time positions, except for the police, uh, for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, that would be five million, uh, five and a half million dollars that we would save right there. Is that correct?
Um, act, so when I calculated it, I included all non-commissioned positions, so not just police, but also fire. So right now, as of March, there are enough vacancies right now to meet the shrinkage for the entire general fund, the seven point six million, and exceed that by six hundred and thirty thousand, just of non-commissioned positions.
So if we were to have no change from where we are today, we would have a six hundred and thirty thousand dollar savings by continuing the freeze.
And we would, that, and that, um, that includes still having public safety recruit classes.
Right.
So if we want to have more savings and six hundred and thirty thousand out of shrinkage, as positions, non-commissions positions come vacant, we need to continue to hold those open as well. So, but the trick is, if you see on this table over on the right, employee turnover tends to go down when economic conditions deteriorate.
Sure.
It just makes sense. So, um, but this is something we've not, I think, um, you know, just really keeping an eye on positions and then really thinking what positions do need to be hired? Or what, what services can we still provide, maybe not by hiring positions, but looking at those activities that are untouchable and touchable in a given work group. So that's another approach to it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, um, we, what we found last time we did hiring freeze is that after a period of time, you have, it, it, it hits departments on a disproportionate basis, just because you tend, in some departments, you get some more turnover than you do in others, right? And some of those don't line up very well with council priorities. So what we're saying is today, we would do a fairly hard freeze. And then as we progress, we would bring to you a more strategic approach, identif, trying to get in alignment with your ascen, identification of essential services. Um, and then that's, will, unfortunately, that will reduce some of our savings from, um, our projected savings. But uh, we'll, we'll need to talk about that when we have refined information. But today, we're going, we're recommending the freeze continue.
I heard the other day on the Business Channel, they said it's going from a freeze to a frost. So, we'll look forward to the frost.
Is this, so I'm, um, because I'm not reading through all this right now. What's the, this table that we're seeing right here? Is this the, are these the shrinkage rates in the budget right now?
Exactly.
Okay.
So I compared the budget and then in the third, third paragraph down that starts with as of March twenty twenty. So I compared the current budget to the current employer, the March, March employment. And then the table on the right is just a frame of reference.
Yeah.
So that is it. And then there also, the other thing too, is there's alternative service delivery models too, beyond just hiring employees.
So maybe I'm confused. I requested um, the full amount of all the full-time positions and equivalencies that haven't been filled but have been budgeted. Is that what the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, the shrinkage is referring to? Or is there another page where my request was?
Yeah, I think that you were, you were asking for full-time positions that are budgeted but not funded.
No, that, yeah, no. That, we went into this year thinking that these are going to be the full-time equivalency positions. Or next year, these are going to be those full-time equivalency positions, which means that today, we are operating without those positions. I wanted to take all of those, um, and figure out what that money would be if we didn't fill those positions for the next two years. According to this, I thought that's what this data was. I'm not sure if that is. Uh, shrinkage is a term we didn't use in a budget committees where I come from, so. It, I don't know, is that what this is? Is this all the full-time equivalents?
Yeah, Mayor, I think your number is the eight million two hundred and sixty-four thousand one oh seven. That, that's what you asked for. So we have budgeted shrinkage, which just normally reflects the n, natural turnover in the organization.
Okay.
And that, we include that in the budget. But then the positions you're talking about that are currently not filled, um, and we, and that, their value, um, gets you to the eight million two sixty-four. And that's six hundred and thirty thousand savings annually, uh, above and beyond what we have in the budget.
So that budget, and forgive me for, need to be walked through this a little more.
Sure.
That eight million two hundred and sixty-four is the amount of money that's budgeted for positions that currently aren't filled? And that, that's a correct assessment, right?
That, that is the, that is the cost of the vacant positions if they were to be hired and aced up.
And they're already budgeted though. Like we budgeted for those positions.
Those positions are budgeted, but the shrinkage isn't, it's not connected to particular positions. The shrinkage is just based on the fact that we have turnover in a given year. We have a few.
And we can predict that over a long period of time.
Mm-hmm. We have a few positions that are explicitly held in the budget. But we really, last year, we eliminated a lot of those. Um, but this shrinkage, it doesn't connect to a particular position. It's just based on the turnover happening.
Right, but there's a hundred and thirty-six vacancies for full-time, non-commissioned, budgeted positions in the general fund. The budgeted annual salaries and benefits for those positions are eight million, eight point two million dollars. Which means that they have been budgeted in twenty twenty. If we don't hire anyone new out of this pot here, then we will operate as we are today and we will have eight million dollars to help fill the five to thirteen million uh, COVID fallout that we're preparing for. Uh, if we weren't to get any windfall money at all from any of the federal stimulus. Is that a correct assessment?
Um, well, you have to net the shrinkage.
That's not how shrinkage works.
I'm not talking about shrinkage. I'm talking about that number.
So you have to take the eight point three million and net the shrinkage out of it, and that's how you get the six hundred and thirty thousand. So currently, we are holding more vacancies that are needed to meet the budgeted shrinkage. But the problem is that if we're wanting to get savings to balance the budget out of shrinkage, we're going to have to shrink more than what was budgeted.
Which means we'd have to lay people off.
We'd have to lay people off to, for that eight to.
To expand that eight, yes.
Yeah.
But just by not hiring anyone else right now and we have eight million dollars in the bank looking to hire people?
No.
Okay.
We have six hundred and thirty thousand.
Okay.
In the bank, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Every large organization I've worked for uses this formula. Yeah, this shrinkage formula.
Yeah, it's just, and we use different percentages for different departments based on how they experience turnover. Like the library, people tend to start working at the library and they stay until they have retirement parties, you know? And so different departments have different turnover.
Well, yeah, we've worked to refine the shrinkage numbers because we actually, in some cases, I think we're a little unfair in our projections and it forced people to cut program in order to meet their shrinkage requirement.
Yeah, that's not much.
So I, I think we're a lot more reflective of personnel.
Do we have an idea of where those departments make up the hundred and thirty-six? How much are police? How much are fire?
These are all non-commissioned.
Yeah, all non-commissioned.
Mm-hmm, right. So I have, they will be.
There it is.
There will be turnover in police and fire that it's, that, um, because they have turnover and then they hire a recruit class. So there will be some turnover in police and fire, but I know what a priority that is, and I know that there could also be overtime in police and fire this year. So I just didn't want to include it in the, I didn't want to include it in the conversation and in the calculation.
That's good to know.
Elizabeth, can I ask, and I'm not trying to get too far in the weeds.
No, no, it's okay.
And, and this may be a silly question if everybody else knows it, I'm sorry. Um, but it talks about full-time, non-commissioned positions. We have part-time folks, especially in the summer. We have more seasonal folks. Where does that play a factor? Because that'll be some additional cost savings if we also freeze those or continue to furlough or whatever it may be.
That's a good question. Um, another thing that we'll be working on, that we'll have more information for you at the retreat in May, is that departments are working on um, savings plans.
Okay.
For twenty twenty, for the COVID twenty twenty environment and then the recovery environment. And I would expect to see some savings related to that and those. But that's not really turnover savings. That's more that we're just not calling people to work for part-time or seasonal jobs.
In a lot of those positions, there's revenue issues, right? So we're not going to have the program there, and normally they're offset by the incoming program.
Yeah, absolutely.
At least portion.
So next time, see more next time.
More to come.
No, more to come.
So I did have a real quick question. Are um, any of these one thirty-six, actually, I just answered that question. Nevermind.
What was it though? We might all learn from it.
Well, I, I was going to say if any of our employees that are furloughed are in this, but these are vacant positions, so.
Right.
Good question. That's a good question.
So by not filling these positions at all, we save six thousand, I mean, six hundred and thirty thousand a year?
Mm-hmm, beyond the original target, yes.
Beyond the original target.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess to modify my question, do, and I haven't seen it, so if it's in here, I'm sorry. We, we do have a plan to bring back our furloughed employees.
Yeah, that is the next slide. And it does not have an issue. Just set me up.
Virtual.
You guys have done these before, yeah. Yeah, hands-free high five. So um, the next slide here is kind of a variation on the first one, but this is related to um, having people working here. Um, we do have furloughs ongoing due to social um, distancing. There's currently two hundred and sixteen positions that are furloughed. The fifty-five employees who would be in a leave deficit for this last week, we have enough leave banked through the voluntary leave program for them to be made whole during this period. So um, the, you know, just, and the other thing to keep in mind is the expiration of the stay-at-home order isn't the same thing as not having social distancing concerns with how we run business. So this will be, I would guess that it'll be a phased, people will all be coming back to full-time work at the same time. Can you may have, okay.
So do they have a date when they're coming back?
Um, I think, you know, on municipal court is one of the most heavily affected departments, just because the volume of people that go through municipal court. And I know that they're really working hard right now on how to have municipal court operations that are um, in tune with public safety concerns. So I don't know the date.
Yeah, Mayor, I think it's going to depend on what guidance we get from the state and county, right, and what, how they start to reopen. Um, and what, because this, it's court, it's libraries, it's park facilities, right? And some of the things I read is we may get the ability to open up. And some of the things I read is we may get the ability to open up the rec centers, but with, you know, some real restrictions. Don't know how the library will fit in any of that, and court is, Elizabeth said, we're working on a plan. I'm going to guess that we'll be talking to you about an extension of furloughs for some employees that we can't accommodate or we're not allowed to put into services yet. I will tell you that we have reduced the number of people on furlough since the originally started. We had people who were using parks more than we anticipated, so we brought people back in to take care of trash in the parks and to do some general cleanup. And we brought some more people up back on court that could help us during the interim. So I think we'll still have some number we'll bring to you after May third.
Can you also bring us what it would cost to keep those who are still furloughed, receiving a paycheck, so they can survive in this time?
Yeah, I think that I heard, I think Dante's only called.
Right now, through May third, it's twenty thousand dollars. And we still have in our donor pool, we have over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So it, well, when we come back, Mayor, we'll do that for you. We'll let you know what the cost will be, making some assumptions on how long the reduced number of furloughed employees would need to be on, on that furlough.
Thank you.
Right. The next is kind of going in a different direction, away from employees and to the contracts that we have with various stakeholder organizations. We have contracts for economic development, tourism, and arts and cultural institutions. Those are the bulk of our stakeholder contracts. We've got, the issue paper outlines the history of those contracts, what we've done with those contracts in the past, and how the revenue downturn would impact them. What we're, you know, the situation with this is to have an equitable and consistent framework for reviewing these contracts. So that's another one for your consideration.
So just, what, which page is this? Are you?
It's page five.
Putting a bunch of pages together, or is this the?
It's page five. It's called city payments to various organizations. So.
So I asked for an analysis to compare how percentage-wise we handled our relationships with these separate organizations back in 2008 during the Great Recession to see if there was any precedents or lessons learned from that time.
Right.
Did that come forward?
Yeah, the interesting thing is that our, our revenue in 2008 wasn't as impacted as it was later on, like in 2010, 2012, just because of the lag in property tax. With Visit Wichita, we had declines in annual amounts for that one in 2010 and 2012. And this is a much different operating environment for transient gas tax. I like to say, in the last economic downturn, we were still able to move around and go places and see people. So this is going to have a dramatic impact on that revenue source. WDDC, that one, it declines, and that are pegged to the property tax valuation in the downtown area. So again, that one lags quite a bit. And then cultural institutions, the practice has been to have that one connected to the increase or decrease in assessed valuation. So that one has decreased in the past.
A couple of institutions during the recession, we did have some years where they took reductions. And so if we were to follow where we are today, it would be reduced by four to five percent. Because that's the equivalent in the general fund, and we treated them like we did other departments. And in Visit Wichita, Elizabeth's right, this is a very different set of circumstances than we've ever been through before. We have frozen Visit Wichita, and normally, my rule of thumb has been to treat them as we see changes in the guest tax, right? But if we did that now, we're, you're talking about a very significant cut to, we, we don't know quite yet where we'll be on guest tax, but it's going to be at least twenty-five percent cut, if not more.
Yeah, we'll, we'll never make it up. I mean, there's some optimism that Kansas and Wichita would be, see a return quicker maybe than some others because of its drivability and regional and so forth. Whereas people aren't going to be traveling overseas or taking the big trips, but they might get out and about closer to home. And so, but we'll never make it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you look at what the White House put on, out there for their phasing the business community back, I don't think it's until the second phase or third phase before you start to see air travel among, across depart, or across states. So we're talking, it's going to be a while. The question is, do you want us to treat the, what do you want us to do with Visit Wichita generally? Get either them down or just get into negotiations with them on reductions? Otherwise, it's coming out of fund balance, and which uses capital.
Do we have visibility on whether they're getting any federal funds for the payroll protection or any of that?
Great question. I don't know.
Because that is being opened up to nonprofits.
We have a board meeting tomorrow, so that I can ask that question.
See if we can get some.
Is it tomorrow or Thursday?
It's tomorrow.
Uh, it's Thursday.
Is it Thursday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thursday at nine, so.
I think the other question here is what's, what's going to happen? This is a rhetorical question. What's going to happen with conventions going forward? You know, after nine eleven, things changed, you know, to conventions. And we've, we've, you know, figured out the new normal for that. Well, I think this is going to be different. I mean, we, every one of us have numerous meetings every day online. And I think that's going to change the way we do business, you know? People are like, oh, well, I can do this. And so I think part of it is just a question back to them too, is, I know you can't see into that big crystal ball, but let's start thinking about what that, what effect that's going to have on this.
Suzie, Suzie reported to us that in 2021, the national projection is a twenty-one percent reduction.
Twenty-one percent?
Twenty-one percent. No, I have no idea how to estimate twenty.
Yeah.
Well, the good news for 2020 is that we already have, the revenue lags. So we'll have two quarter, and we get four payments a year. So we'll have one, one payment will be based on quarter four, 2019. One payment's based on quarter one, 2020. So we'll have, half of our revenue will be normal revenue, and then the other half will be abnormal. So, I mean, that, it gives us a little, a little more flex, you know, a little bit of a buffer, but that's how that is.
So in the deepest recession time, what did we do with Visit Wichita? Or after nine eleven, when we saw, as the Vice Mayor points out, deduction in air travel and travel? Is there any historical precedence we can look at to apply to Visit Wichita, to give us some type of guidance? Or any, or any, any lessons learned from that time? It says we've been funding Visit Wichita since nineteen eighty-one, which was a long time ago. So you would think that we would have some.
Yeah, I think that during, after September eleventh, that we thought that everything came to a halt. But I remember that I was back traveling and going to conferences by late October.
Right.
And, and so, I mean, the data, we, I mean, we can certainly look into that. It's no problem. But I don't think there really is a precedent for what's going on right now.
Well, and we added, we increased guest tax once since 2011, and we added TBIT. So those data points weren't even available back then.
And that goes right to the organization, right? So.
Yeah.
They'd be kept even more whole if out of the general fund, we matched what we did. It may have been after nine eleven, but one of these other crisis times, the recession.
Yeah, Mayor, we reduced in ten and twelve, so we'll go back and get, figure out that reduction, those deductions.
Yeah.
And we'll look at what happened in around nine eleven.
Okay, it just seems like there might be, if there's any unintended consequences that we learn from those deductions, you know, it'd be nice to know what those are.
Right.
Looking backwards, instead of just kind of brainstorming going forward, and maybe some lessons we can learn. So that's, I appreciate staff looking into that.
Yep, we'll do that. Are you comfortable that all institutions being reduced by what we do with our departments?
By four percent?
Yeah. Four to five percent.
That's only fair.
Others are the economic development projects. We've talked to Kansas Global and WEBA about performing on their work plan, and they both have said, if, if things can get back to normal, they, they still believe they can meet their benchmarks by end of the year. Six months, five months, something like that.
When, when do we say everything is back to normal though?
Yeah, what does that mean?
What does that look like?
What's the new normal?
Yeah, well, it's, again, the work, the, the work is different for both groups. For Kansas Global, it's actually preparing people for trade. And that, in some cases, I think they had some people going to conferences or going on trips. And then some of it was already just going to be virtual or, you know, electronic. The WEBA was primarily the resource direct, the resource information or directory for small business. A lot of it was going to be testimonial, and they were going to do interviews. And, and then the interviews were going to be with the resource people like Wayne Vella and others. And so that's going to be pushed back a little bit, but it still can be done.
I have just my little bit of contact with Kansas Global and with WEBA have been that they, as you said, I think, I don't even think they were saying had to be back to normal before the pandemic, but they have to get back to some sense of, okay, businesses are now ready to get back to business. And I think that's what we're hearing from businesses, that they would like to do that as soon as possible. So I think they, at least now, right now, think they can both deliver on their products, right?
Could, could we potentially, I appreciate their optimism, but maybe check in in like June and just stay up to date with how they're actually doing as opposed to where they want to be? Just, I would hate to see them feel confident that they can get back to normal and then not, and then we find out later.
If you'd be all right, I would, how about if we have a status report in early July?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what's the great, what's the partnership saying?
Partnership hasn't been active. They're the ones organizing the recovery plan. And they're also working on the resource, you know, going after, securing resources for recovery. So they're the ones trying to get help with testing kits and with PPE and all of that. And, and there's a big business prospect that they're pitching this week, I think.
Okay.
They're working as hard as I've seen them work, to be honest.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was Scott. Thank you, Scott.
Thanks for chiming in there, Mayor. At the ready.
All right. And then the last one on the list is WDDC, and that's paid for through the Schmidt. And so.
We won't touch that, because that's going to be.
It's a pastor.
Yeah, it's its own phone. Yeah, so.
So, and then what the Schmidt is?
It's been.
It's a taxing district, so they, they spend what they receive.
Okay.
It's, yeah, let's see, Kellogg, Kellogg to Central and Washington to the River. The next one is two pages, Public Art and Capital Projects. So the text is on page six, and the table's on page seven. Last year, a public art ordinance was adopted that formalized a funding level of two percent of projects in the CIP to have, to be pooled for public art. I've checked in with engineering, and the projects that are 2021 to 2028 projects on page seven have not been initiated yet. Another thing to consider is that the Aquatics Master Plan Public Art was, this list is exact, this is the list from the CIP that was adopted last year. And the one point four million dollars to the Aquatics Master Plan was not on the list last year. It was not calculated as part of the two percent. And then also, I've, there, there's interest in adding public art to Patrol East in the amount of four hundred thousand. So, the situation, the thing to consider is, just to consider this topic and then to provide direction to staff on which approach to go forward with. There's three in the memo. Let's see. The one would be to push the unallocated amount back in the CIP. And then another approach would be if these projects were deferred, to then also defer the public art component of the projects.
Okay, so we're looking at, I'm not sure what I want to ask here. The public art, we did the two percent ordinance. This additional funding in the Aquatics Master Plan, this, you're saying this was before we had the two percent?
Well, the Aquatics Master, I guess what that is, is it's, there is a chart, there's this, this same chart here on page seven is in the back of the budget book, and it was put into the, I mean, in the back of the CIT, CIP. And it was put in based on the recommendations that we'd received and had gone through the process up to that point, and then was put in the CIP. And the Aquatics Master Plan Public Art isn't on this list. So if one of your recommendations is to push forward unallocated funding into out years of the CIP, you have to keep in mind that the Aquatics Master Plan is intended to be using, is intends to use unallocated funding for their public art. So it's tricky. Like, right in this table right now, it says that there's unallocated public art funding. But I think everything I've heard on the CIP, on the Aquatics Master Plan project is they plan on doing one point four million dollars of public art.
Right, and a reminder, we're two and a half million dollars short on the Aquatics Master Plan implementation. Now, the one point four is a deceptive number, and this is, we haven't had a chance to process this, I apologize. But the first phase art has already been bid and will be constructed.
Yeah.
So it's really what's left for phases two and three. And that will, will get you that number, but the question is, do we move forward with public art? Do we do so at the two percent, or do you put it on hold during the, the recovery period? I think that's the, the policy question.
Is there already an element of art being put into it without the two percent?
That's designed into it. Yeah, it's more than just art. It's design and art.
Above and beyond the two percent, yes.
It's design and art, both.
Yep.
So have we, have we already reached that two, is the two percent additional? Is it double dipping or?
We didn't, it's two percent, what we did was an approximate two percent for the Aquatics Master Plan. But it doesn't, it's not taken out of the unallocated portion here, right? And that, because we remember, Jeff, that was while the council was still wrestling with the two percent. We had already started the work on this and the design work. And when I knew we were going to be over budget, I circled back with the council. We had some modifications to art, and the council said you didn't want to do that at the time, find the two and a half. So we were going to build, actually, it was three at the time, three million. We were going to build that into the recommended CIP. Well, everything's changed now, right, in terms of where we are? You saw projects that were going to be deferring in order to be able to get us savings. So then, I think, and, and, you know, Jeff, you asked this question before. What do we, what do we do during this period of time with the two percent? And that's why we're teeing it up for this question.
Could we handle some of these on a case-by-case scenario instead of just doing the blanket two percent? You know, like, the police, the patrol center, I believe it's in a park, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yep.
So, rather than just say no to a police station, well, let's, let's look at the transition. I just, I wish we had a little more manual control on this, where we could look at them case by case and discuss them.
Which is what we, what we were doing before the two percent.
Right.
The design council was doing that on a case-by-case basis, and they kind of kept us.
Well, and the design council will continue to do that, right? The unallocated was their pot of money to then allocate to specific projects. Yep.
So is the question, we, is the question that we proceed as we had kind of already agreed to or modify that?
That's the perfect question.
And we would have to make a council vote to defer from the ordinance for a certain amount of time, wouldn't we, if we're going to do that?
Yeah, and we'll, we work with law on that, yep. For instance, if you said during this period of time, one way you could do this, during this period of time, we're going to reduce down to one percent, and we'll, and let the design council then figure out how that money will be spent. And that's an alternative.
And that would be for phase two and phase three, since phase one.
And Aquatics for everything that's processed for twenty and twenty-one.
I mean, when we passed that vote, we kind of took some power away from the council, didn't we?
Well, we, we gave them a.
The city council or the design council?
Design council.
I didn't feel like we did, but.
I thought we empowered the design council more where we really didn't have a say in this.
I thought we codified.
Yeah.
For them so that they didn't have quite as much leeway.
But they will submit to you recommend.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's why we voted differently.
So personally, I would, I would move, or not move, but I would think that we could proceed as we agreed to. Because if we're building things, I would hate to see the quality of something diminish just because of where we're at. I would almost prefer if something was going to have that reduction and it would impact what the artistic value would be to the community, that it be deferred rather than reducing the funding for it.
I completely agree.
I do too.
For saying that very articulately, because I agree.
I would still prefer to do a case by case scenario because we're going to be doing other cuts out there that, I, I would like to at least have it on the table to weigh out versus something that may not be as aesthetic, but may be something more important to the community, I just.
Yeah, I also want to look at this more globally where to make sure that we are able to fund our police and firefighters and our first responders and how that will look versus some of the stuff that could possibly be put on hold for a year. Because we, we have seen a rise in, in domestic violence. We have seen that this particular crisis has caused other challenges in our communities. So I want to take that into consideration as well.
And I, and I think it's important, the discussion that Vice Mayor brought up is, what's the new norm look like? You know, are, are people still going to be flooding the city facilities or, or other buildings? Or do we have a new norm where, you know, the, the capacity of this room's only 10 people now and we're doing more things not in person?
I agree with Councilmember Johnson.
That's helpful, okay. So the 2% stays, you will look at them, they still have to come to you, the projects have to come to you. And we, we will be deferring projects, so that will move some of this.
So just for clarification.
Dollar value of the, of these, when, even though the council wants.
That's what I was going to say. I think maybe we could be better at being more explicit about what that piece is. I think we've gotten better at that over time, but just continue that, being explicit about the aesthetic and art pieces of that so we can have a better discussion when they come to us.
Can, can you restate the, for clarification, what the direction was that you interpreted from the council when it comes to this item?
What I heard Councilmember Johnson offer was that the, you'll leave the 2% in place, but we will be deferring projects that will probably, will reduce the number, the, the value of the art that, for that year. And that any project that has public art will come to the council and the dollar amount will be identified as well as the art component for you to make a final decision.
So it will still freeze up the 2% for the year? And it will be, each project will come and then at the end, there might be an imbalance of 2%?
Yeah, what I, what I heard is if we, if there are projects that, the art component is determined to be significant, we may wind up deferring that project instead of eliminating art component from the project.
You defer the project before you defer the other.
But we're still freezing up 2% for art. Then at the end, if we don't use it all, we'll be able to reallocate that funding, is that the 2%?
Yeah, that 2%, if I'm correct, was a part of CIP infrastructure anyway. So it was just allocating a specific dollar amount per project. So if the, if there was a project that was $4 million, we would know 2% of that, that project already would be used for art.
Okay, so we only, it's only when the projects are made that?
Yeah.
Okay, we, I get that now.
But also in, in other projects, we wouldn't use it. So the water treatment plan is $500 million, we're not using 2% of that for the artistic work.
Right.
So it, it really is project by project, but it just shows them a certain dollar amount. And they'll still have to come to council for that.
Okay.
And another consideration too is, so the formula, it, it could be that the pool decreases if we were to defer or add fewer new projects to the CIP. So, because it's based on, I think, GO, LST and transient guest tax.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's, you know, kind of in this shrinking mode. So that's another thing to keep in, it's like bad shrinking. So that's another thing to keep in mind as we look at this is that there's, there's going to be less funding for public art if the CIP is smaller. Are you ready for the next one? Convention centers, rentals. Oh, well, the next group of things are things that are responses to the pandemic. So convention centers, parking and retail space, license fee deferrals, garage sales and municipal court. So they're all things that you all talked about last time. So convention center is on page eight of your packet. And so there's two things. One is tenant rent, I believe you all talked about last time, waiving that for folks who cannot use their tenant space in Century Two during the stay at home order. And then the second element there is deferring payments till year end for meeting rooms in the Promenade area. So there's two parts of it.
So our recommendation, yep, is the two month deferral.
Yeah, so, so that would be about $8,000. Everyone, okay, okay. So the next one is pretty similar. This is related to parking. People can still access the parking, but there are less people using the parking spaces because businesses changed. So the parking revenue is credited to the downtown parking fund and the retail space revenue is credited to the economic development fund. So the recommendation here is to waive parking and retail rent for two months.
And are those months April and May or May and June? Have we determined?
Probably April and May is what we're looking at.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, the BOG. Just checking, right, all right. And our next one is license. The next one is license fee deferrals. The finance department has issued licenses and they've evaluated and determined which licenses are heavily, those businesses are heavily impacted during this time. Those are on page 10. The recommendation here is to prorate the renewal rate for impacted licenses. Since people renew at different times during the year, that'll be more equitable so that when people's renewal comes due, everybody is prorated for the time that there was limited activity. So that's the staff recommendation, so.
So I, I like this, but I've had two mobile food vendors reach out to me about, I think their renewal fee is due now.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any way we can give them an extension into maybe summer when these stay at home orders are possibly lifted where they can actually start to generate some revenue to maybe?
Yeah, would you want to jump in, Mark?
Yes, sir, Councilmember Johnson, that's the other alternative we've looked at was just deferring the payment of, of license fees. Like the major said last time, we're trying to balance the administrative burden of doing something with the, the outcome of wanting to help our licensees. But certainly we could look at deferring any licensees if that's the direction the council wants us to go.
So mostly, so like I agree with this. So the license fee renewals will be adjusted to 10/12 of the, the current fee that they have. I'm just saying for those people who have to pay in April, is there a way to give them an extension to make their normal payment until they can start generating revenue?
If that's the direction the council wants us to go, we certainly can do that.
What I, what we could do is we could waive any penalties.
Yeah, I was just going to say that.
So it'd still be doing payable, but if they ask for an extension, we won't charge them interest or an additional fee.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds good.
That work?
That's like a deferral.
I, I think the inclination is to keep the business is in licensed status.
Yeah.
So that they're still completing their paperwork and all of those checks have been done.
Yeah.
So, okay, so I've got written down here, extension, okay, so waive penalties and that the 10/12s is okay.
Yeah, because we don't want any holdup for them to be able to start generating revenue.
Right.
Right.
So quicker they can get back and open for business, the better.
Yeah.
All right, garage sales. So the recommendation, we quantify the lost revenue for a garage sale waiver. So the recommendation here is to designate a four week period for no fee garage sales.
So you'd still have your two licenses that you could do annually, but then we'd have this bonus four week period. Okay.
You want to do this when it's safe to have people.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, I think I went to that garage sale, but I'm not really sure.
You could use chalk and put the square six feet apart.
Anyhow, okay, well, we will proceed with that when it's safe.
Yeah, I think that's an opportunity to do something fun, community wise too. Once it is safe to get out and the Great Wichita Garage Sale type thing, so.
So the next one in response to the stay at home order is municipal court fee waivers. You asked us to look at amnesty last time. I think Dante is on the phone and he is far more versed in municipal court operations than I am. But just briefly, the concept from the admin judge, Judge Jones, is to waive fees for failure to comply with the citation and warrant fees for this period and to have that program available for 90 days after municipal court opens. One of the considerations with having an amnesty day is that it's something that generates a high volume of people. And keeping in mind that with social distancing, that might not be ideal. And also keeping in mind that when municipal court does open, it's going, they're going to have a heavy workload and a difficult time scheduling all of these court events. So that is why the admin judge has been, I guess, considering this.
I think I mentioned last time. They can elaborate, but we're looking at a structural change to deal with some of the causes that have led to the requirement for amnesty. And I, we're hoping that we can roll out a different model that will be more responsive to the community. But it's going to take us some time to work on that. But this addresses an immediate issue that Councilmember Johnson was, I believe, me too when we first talked about this at the last retreat.
Okay, so the next group of things are related to running, having a well-run city. So they're related to how we run the organization to continue critical operations and to be sustainable and also to address employee safety and retention. Those concepts are contract extensions, a review of paid parental leave, staff wage stratification review and pension contribution rates. On contract extensions, those are on page 13. There are, at this point, 11 contracts that have been identified for extension. They're on the list. These are contracts that are expected, that would expire between June 30th and December 31st of this year. Contracts involve lots of meetings, lots of time on behalf of businesses to have proposals, lots of in-person interviews. There's also a lot of time involved in potentially transitioning to a new vendor and having that contract or just having a new contract with an existing vendor. So the recommendation here is to direct staff to proceed with presenting for city council approval a list of contracts to be extended.
In response to your question last time, they're all in good standing. The contractors are all in good standing.
Number 10, on page 14, a review of parental leave. Just filling in a lot of questions from last time. This current city of Wichita HR policy is to follow FMLA and that is explained on page 14. All employees who've been here for a year and have been in paid status for, let's see, 1,250 hours in the last 12 months are eligible for FML. That entitles you to 12 weeks of unpaid leave. Employees are required to use their personal leave accumulations, but you can bank up to 80 hours of sick leave for times when you know you're going to come back to work and your children will have ear infections, for example. We, we are doing research right now on the number of new parents that have used FMLA in the last two years. The number of them that have been in unpaid status while they've been in FML and then another number of parents that have not used the entire 12, 12 month allocation because they would have gone into unpaid status. We reached out to peers. All four of those peers follow FMLA, but they supplement with a number of things. Oklahoma City supplements with shared leave, which is not available today to new parents because our policy requires that you have a life threatening condition to be eligible for shared leave. So there are a limited number of childbirth or new child situations, newborn situations that qualify for that, thankfully. Short-term disability is used by the city of Tulsa. That helps make employees' wages be made whole during their unpaid time. And then both Des Moines and Kansas City, Missouri, offer paid parental leave to employees. The policies are relatively new, they've just researched them. And when I contacted them, they had plenty of stories. Des Moines, you know, just like what they thought through, what their thought process was. Des Moines offers four weeks parental leave. Kansas City, Missouri offers, offers six weeks and then an additional two for, I think, what is considered a difficult delivery as certified by a doctor. So at this point, we are relatively new to the research process and are, we're really partnering on the data from payroll, which has been pretty, they've been overextended at this point, dealing with a different kinds of COVID leave. So at this point, our recommendation is to continue to research the gap between paid and unpaid parental leave and then return to you with recommendations.
This is one of the things that confused me about these meetings. So I appreciate the global perspective on how this has been done. I brought this up because we're in a particular situation where people have given their sickened days and their vacation days over to each other to help one another through the furloughs. And my request was that this actually becomes an amendment, gets voted on and becomes a part of this year's budget because of the unique crisis that has inspired the generosity of our employees to actually give up their, their days. So the staff recommendation, I find confusing that you, it's going to be, continue to be researched. Does that mean that I won't be able to get my amendment to the budget?
Yeah, this policy is set, the policy on parental leave is actually part of the human resources manual. It's not part of the budget. So the budget action would be to fund something like this. I don't know how it would be funded, if it would be funded in the non-departmental budget or what have you.
So it would be proviso. Proviso is a policy that, that lasts the length of the budget? Or would it be what you guys call a pilot program?
Yeah.
How do I make this happen then?
What we plan on doing is finishing the research, because we need a structure. We need to understand what it is that the paternal leave looks like so we can cost that out. So that's why we wanted to look at what peer cities are doing. And then we'll bring something forward so you can look at that and, and we'll probably have a recommendation on structure. And we'll share that with the council well in advance. So you have an idea to see what it is that you'd be voting on and, and what the cost implications would be.
So the continuation of the research is until we get to crafting the actual budget moving forward or another piece of legislation moving forward? I can get a vote on this as requested this year. So when our employees come back and have burned through their days and they find out that they are pregnant and need maternity leave, they could actually be able to utilize that maternity leave? Is that fair assessment?
Yeah, well, by the time we're done with, before we get to the next retreat, we'll finish the research and have an outline for you in terms of what possible policy options you have.
Bob, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So if we have someone who donated leave and we are grateful for that, if they did, and then they find out that they are expecting, they maybe weren't planning it, so they donated their leave, let's say, can they then, for lack of a better word, tap into the shared leave program?
Not without changes.
Okay, so we could do that this year just because we have a very unique situation, right? And then look at the financial implications more long term and, and get the, because this is with cost. I mean. I mean, it's, it's a great idea, and I, like I mentioned before, as a public health professional, this is a best practice. But I'm also, I just need more information, including what the financial implications are going to be.
So, to follow up with the council member's question, then, would the shared leave program still have to be donated to the person who is now expecting a child? Or would that policy need to be changed so that anyone who becomes expecting will be able to have paid, paid leave?
That would be a change to the current voluntary shared leave policy, which explicitly excludes childbirth and care of a newborn unless there's a life-threatening condition.
But we made exceptions for the COVID-19 circumstances and the furloughs. So, we, I'll have to work with our team, but that's in terms of making sure that I'm not misspeaking because of IRS restrictions. That's the only thing we kind of bumped up against. But if we can define it as an eligible activity, then yes, Mayor, your latter, your second scenario is what we could look at as an, as an option or alternative.
And, and you could go both ways. Either the leave can, I looked at the forms, and the leave can either be, in, in other cases, like if someone has a heart attack or something and they're not able to come to work and they hadn't banked 12 weeks of paid leave, right? It's not something people plan for. So, either leave can be donated directly to a particular employee or when people sometimes retire, they just donate excess leave to the bank, and that can be used for employees today, too.
And that's one of my concerns, is that someone has a heart attack and people want to donate their leave to help this person, but the leave was entaken for, for maternity leave pay. I, I'm just worried about draining that account where it's made for people who might need leave because their child is fighting cancer. And because we're not willing to just bite the bullet on whatever the cost is for families to actually have babies, you know, I, I think that this is a values, a value statement, which a budget is a collection of values, but also it will, it will pay dividends in attracting the right type of people we want to work for City Hall. So, I, I get that we could utilize the pot that we utilized for COVID-19. My concern is that that's getting low, but also I, I, I think that some quick math can be done to figure out roughly what we can put in the bank to make sure that, you know, moms and dads don't have to decide between a paycheck and a baby.
That's really the last phase of our analysis. That's where we're headed right now, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you.
I just want to come in. I, I appreciate this measured approach to it because I do think it is important. And I, and Elizabeth, I really appreciate you saying, okay, this is, this is an HR policy, and the budget is separate from that, because I think that's how we have to look at it first, is, okay, what would a policy look like? And then what would the effects of that be on the budget? So, I appreciate the measured approach.
So, how do we move forward doing that, then? Do we actually do provisos where we can have policy inserted in this that is connected with the budget? Because the, my experience is if you have a policy that costs money, then it's germane to the budget. So, if we were to do, if we were to do a policy next week about getting an up-and-down vote on paid maternity leave, does that now have to be done alone, or can that be done as part of the budget? Or do you need to do it where you pass the policy, and then later you go to the budget, and then you have to pass the allocation during the budget process?
Well, since we're in the budget process right now, in your hypothetical situation, if we voted next week and approved maternity leave, then it would be incorporated into next year's budget.
Okay. And it just confuses me with your comment. I just, I'm looking for clarification. But while we're doing the budget, that policy piece is something that you guys wouldn't want to entertain in the budget discussion. Would that be a separate discussion?
Which budget discussion?
The one we're having right now. The one where you just said that you would rather this be a separate policy conversation. And my argument is, well, what's holding it up is the budget research. So, I just want to know when the appropriate, most appropriate time is to make this actionable. Is it during the, when we're putting together the budget, because we'll know how much it costs to put the item in there? Or is it we pass the policy first and then we go to the budget? So, I just am looking for how it's typically done, because it's apparently, we don't have provisos here.
And Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, please, always, but this would be for the 2021 budget, correct?
Well, I'm not sure what the mayor's recommendation is. We're going to look at past practice and tell you what 2020 cost would be.
Okay.
2020?
2020, right.
Because the members who gave up their days for COVID are going to come back to work and not have maternity, paid maternity options. So, I'm hoping that we can do it for this budget year, yes.
And, and is there any way, well, I guess it would be really hard. I was just going to say, how many people are really going to be impacted, but aren't going to know? I mean, it could be one or two people. I mean, so I just want to make sure that we're being cautious and looking this, at this holistically for the organization and for the budget.
So, they can know different eight or nine months.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That's right. And I think that goes back to Councilmember Title's first comment about we could do something this year that's an exception and then look at a long-term policy change, too. Kind of an emergency.
You know, the operating budget, when we presented, has a number of policy, individual policies that the council is adopting or that have helped shape the budget. So, this would be no different than one of those.
So, it is appropriate to discuss this policy item while discussing the budget?
Yes, because it has cost implication.
But we would have to pass the policy from the bench. I mean, that's not a, it wouldn't be in this room during budget discussions, correct? Just so I know.
That doesn't sound like what was just.
Well, I don't know. Let me go back. We have to look at how, I always get confused about what the council does and doesn't approve in HR policy. So, I, I'd have to go back and take a look at that.
And I don't know. That's why I'm asking. That was a question. So, thank you.
But if there is going to be change in what we do today, the council will have to act one way or the other because it will have financial implications.
But from the bench, not in a retreat.
Correct, right.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't know if this helps, but just, just to add in, Mayor, we are actually doing what you're recommending right now. So, you, you brought this up, and Bob said he's going to give us some more information, and we're still going to have multiple retreats on the budget. So, we're talking about both the policy and waiting to hear back on more of the financial impact. And going forward, this actual budget that we're talking about won't even be voted on until August. So, we've got some time to get that data working in and then figure out what policy can be.
So, if I went retroactive and this policy in place goes through this fiscal year, I could bring it up for a vote in two weeks?
The fiscal year is until, is until December 31st.
Exactly, until the next fiscal year, but the budget work on is next year, so.
Well, we modify this year's budget as well, Mayor.
Yeah, it would modify.
Yep. Do we, do we have a number on how many people this would affect this year? That's what we're working with.
Yeah, it's, it depends. Twenty, in 2018, we had a bit of a baby boomlet. I think that between 2018 and 2019, I think there were about 20 to 30 birth mothers that were on FML status. We don't, our demographics are a little older, a little more male, so. But we do also have quite a few birth fathers that take, go on FML for a shorter period of time.
And I worry about doing too much of a in-depth analysis about like what this possibly could as if having babies are going to be a, by our employees is going to be a fiscal liability. That's one of the reasons why, you know, I think we throw the policy in, we know we'll have enough of a cushion to cover it. And maybe we do, maybe we don't. But I also worry about walking down that path where we start, perhaps, in the future, discriminating against people who we think might have children because we'd have to pay for maternity leave. So, I, I am cautious of the idea that we need to see the exact numbers, and we treat this like a, you know, like any other line item in this packet, because I think that this is a different, this is a different type of situation.
I, I do, since this is a public meeting, I do feel like I have to make a comment here. I unequivocally could guarantee that our HR department follows all of the, you know, federal standards and state standards regarding hiring practices and discrimination. And I am quite confident that no one will be discriminated against because they are childbearing years. So, I just want to make sure that, that said, we have a fantastic HR department who, who really does a great job of making sure that we're compliant when it comes to hiring practices. So, I would not expect that to, to change in any way. I just, I just want to make that on public record since this is an open meeting.
So, then, the number doesn't actually have to correlate with the people within, where we're going to get the number, then, if we're not going to relate it to our employees? Like, so we don't, you agree, then, that we don't actually need a hard number? We can instead do more of a cushion number?
I would still like to see the financial implications because we're in a budget retreat and we're in a deficit. And so, I think that they go hand in hand. I think to make the most informed decision, we need all of the information that's available to us, the policy part, but also the budget part. To me, they're hand in glove, and they're not separate issues.
Good.
All right, onto number 11. It's on page 15. We were asked to identify the number of employees that earn more than $100,000 per year. Currently, that is 3% of the workforce. On average, employees that earn more than $100,000 per year have 19.4 years of service. So, a lot of times, these are long-tenured employees, and the data is shown on page 15. I'm going to go run and get some water while you guys are looking at that.
The last issue was pension contribution rates. And we've talked, we presented the actuarial report to you today.
Next one. So, by state statute, and it's referenced in the document, we are, the city of Wichita, or the WPNF, that's the Wichita Police and Fire Retirement Plan, is required to make the actuarially required contributions. Making these contributions is also important for our bond rating. One alternative is that there is a pension reserve fund that is used to smooth pension contribution rates, and this was last used in 2011.
So, I asked a question, and I think I got it in here, and then I just, I got a follow-up to that. The requirement, because we're over 90% on our pensions, which is awesome. I think the requirement to still maintain our A rating is having over 80%. Is that true?
I guess easiest way to answer that, to say it's, it's not that simple. The rating agency process, they have an empirical model in which they use to evaluate us, a quantitative model, but they also use qualitative considerations. So, they do have the 80%, amount that I referenced in there, and that's kind of a threshold that they would use. But there's other things that may be more qualitative they don't like. And one is if you contribute less than your actuarial rate. Another is if your funded ratio is declining. And what they do is they'll use that qualitative to adjust their quantitative model. So, I apologize for giving you a round-the-block answer, but that's about the most, best answer I can give you.
And Mark, it's, it's not just maintaining our rating. It's the underlying issues involved. Because if you were to drop to a lower funding rate, the city still has that obligation. So, what we would either have to do is incur debt and increase our obligation, ultimate obligation, or at some point, a future generation is going to have to make up that, that loss. You know, even at 90%, we're not fully funded, right? So, that 10% is still going to have to be funded. So, all we're doing is pushing the issue farther down the road. And I, that's, you know, it's, this obviously causes some concern for our employees. And we're starting to hear from employees asking if our pension system is going to remain sound. And I, I haven't ever received that kind of correspondence or inquiry before from.
I appreciate that argument. I'm just looking for the information. Also, I understand that there is a statutory, a Kansas statute, that says what we should be. I text messaged about an hour ago, our communications staffer, to ask her if she could look that up for me. And she says that statutorily, we need to be at 22.6%. Is that correct?
That's what our actuary recommended. The statute requires us to contribute at the actuarially recommended rate, which I believe is 22.6% for PNF right now.
So, how many, much percentage liability, I mean, in the bank of your pension, I thought statutorily.
I'm sorry, Mayor, that's an apples and oranges. She, she just responded back to you, or whoever it was, responded back to you in terms of what the contribution rate is, not what our reserve percentage is or our outstanding liability.
Right, that's what I mean. Like, because we have 90%, this is like, you could probably go to 80%, but you really shouldn't. There's a statutory percentage that says you really can't fall behind this. And I don't think it's 22%. I think it's in 60s or 70s, but I didn't know if you knew that.
Yeah, I don't think the Kansas statutes have a percentage that our pension fund has to be funded at. But they do require us on the PNF side to contribute the actuarially required rates.
Okay, I thought I read it. So, if I find it, I'll send it to you.
Mayor, I think maybe the, the, the policy issue, we have tried to be conservative in creating a pension reserve fund, recognizing that there are financial, there are times where it's hard to make the full contribution. And we have used that fund, back in 2011, we used that fund to help offset some of the employer's obligation. And that could be a policy issue that we bring forward to you. That way, you're not threatening the percentage of funding, but of, or the outstanding liability, but you're using some money that we did bank for purposes like that.
Yeah, and I'm not allocating or suggesting that we do that. I just wanted to know what the threshold was. My understanding is our city pension system is one of the best funded in the country. Is that correct?
I think that's what our actuary said this morning. We're in the upper 25th percentile of public pension plans in the United States.
Right, and I, and I don't want to risk that. I just wanted to know what's the next guy's numbers look like? And can we, you know, is there anything we can do to utilize some of that money to help get us through this, this current budget crisis? And I guess that the managers somewhat referring to, there is a, a emergency fund that might be something worth looking at in this unique time. I'm just trying to get all the pieces on the table. I'm not trying to say we should or shouldn't do it. I just wanted to get the research out there.
Well, just to make sure that, so, I think it's really important that we fund our pension fund as we have been doing. And so, I want to make sure that we don't deviate from that. That would be my, my side of this, so.
And I would agree, unless we had to lay off firefighters, police officers, first responders, then I think that looking into reserve funds might be a better idea. And it sounds like there is a reserve fund that will allow us to meet our pension obligations while also our community safety obligations.
Right, but I've not heard that suggestion that we lay off firefighters or police, so.
No, we haven't. We just have to figure out the five to 13 million hole that we're currently projected to be in.
We have pretty, been pretty clear that police and fire are protected, so.
I think unequivocally, all of us agree with that.
I want to make sure, no, that that, again, public meeting, I don't want anyone to think that I am suggesting we lay off police and fire. Have not suggested that anywhere during this meeting today. I just, my comment is, I think that it is important to protect our pension for our employees also and not to get ourselves into a hole, so. That's my comment.
Agreed.
And one thing I will also tell you, as a manager mentioned, we do have a history of using the pension reserve fund, particularly during the last recession. But the one point I would want to make to you is, even when we use the pension reserve fund, the council still contributed at the actuarially required rate. We just use the pension reserve fund to offset some of those costs.
So, the pension reserve fund, which is what I'm now focused on, has been used in crisis situations like this?
Yes, sir. We created it in 2001, and we contributed to it basically until the 2009 recession, built the balance up to somewhere in our neighborhood of $7 million. Then during the recession of '09, '10, '11, I believe we used several million dollars of it. We've contributed back to it a little bit in recent years, and now it has a balance of about 4.6 million.
Excellent. So, uh, I'll come back to it. Thank you. What other reserve funds do we, or funds do we have in reserve? Now, we're on the subject of reserve funds. Unless you want to wait till three more slides in, we're at the end of it, I can ask that question.
There, the only, we, as far as fund balance goes, the general fund has a fund balance. It's about 12% of operating expenditures, 12 to 13% of operating expenditures. That's, of course, also important for cash flow because our revenue doesn't come in on a regular basis. The only other one, we still have the permanent reserve sub-fund of the general fund, and it's very small. It's from project closeouts, I believe.
We do have a health insurance reserve, right? We do have a health insurance reserve, right? Which, yeah. We have to be careful how that's been used, but...
And I know that staff is evaluating this current situation's impact on health insurance right now.
So, six months ago during the election, my opponent, former mayor, said that we had $30 million in the reserve. What was he referring to?
Yeah, that's the general fund balance. So, the general fund's about, broad numbers, the general fund's about 200 million. And of course, that balance too, it's important for it to grow slightly every year as the budget grows, so that you maintain that fund balance as a percent of your operating expenditures. So...
It's a rainy day fund?
Really, it's more of like a business continuity operations fund. Because our, like, our two, we get sales tax, I mean, property tax, that comes twice a year. So, imagine if you, your biggest revenue source, you got two paychecks a year. You know, you're gonna need to have a little more cash in the bank for cash flow than if you got paid every other week, so...
Of course.
Yeah, I'm not saying that we won't consider something out of the general fund.
Fun, fun balance. Never had a rainy day fund. We've been behind the eight ball for so long, and it's cracked it a little bit.
Yeah, I know that Overland Park has, they're heavily sales tax dependent on the area around Oak Park Mall. And so, they're always more exposed to economic variation because of sales tax. And I know that they drew down their general fund balance a number of years ago, but there, I mean, it's just a very different, you also have to look at, when you see people that draw down their fund balance, you have to look at their context. You know, how much is their fund balance as a percent of their budget? And then also, what is their revenue mix? So, our revenue mix is a little different than theirs, so...
It's also important to realize, our rating agencies pay very close attention to that. And as we continue to borrow money, we cannot allow borrowing money to get more expensive. So, if we draw that fund balance down too much, that inhibits our ability to borrow the money we need as well, so...
Yeah, and just back to one of the slides from earlier, I, I think that this is going, the changes in the economic situation, recovery's gonna look different than what we're experiencing right now. But I think, maybe I'm a pessimistic budget person, but I think that we need to prepare ourselves for tough decision making for a number of years, not for one year. And so, that's why this exercise of looking through the untouchable activities and affirming those, and potentially deferring projects, and being very choosy about new projects that we add to the CIP, all those things are important. Because as life gets back to normal for people, we need to pretend you to provide city operations that are reliable, that, you know, we, this is what we're doing, and we're not having rapid swings from year to year. So, I think that we need to prepare ourselves for decision making that's not just for this year, but that lasts.
Yeah, I think you make an outstanding point, and Bob and I talked about this during our weekly meeting, that, you know, six, eight, 10, 12 months from now, people will kind of forgotten about this, and it'll be the next thing. But the budget implications we'll still be dealing with for several years to come. And so, making sure that, you know, we take care of the projects and the services to the city that we have now, and being really frugal about adding any additional cost is gonna be paramount. Because our citizens deserve to have the best, you know, that we can give them. And so, I know everybody's committed to that, and I appreciate finance. This is an incredible amount of information that you put together really quickly, so thank you, thank you.
So, can I get a analysis of, you said in 2011, triggered usage of the emergency reserve fund? Can, can I get a percentage analysis of what the...
The rate impact?
Yeah, what, where they were at that actually triggered them to start dipping into emergencies, emergency funds?
And what it would have been is, for example, if the actuary says, "The rate for this pension plan is 10%," and then it's kind of like a buy down. So, we would have, right, is that how it kinda will? Uh, maybe you can explain it better, but...
You probably can, I'm not sure if I totally understand it after all these hours you've put in today.
Like I said, I think what's important for you to understand, first of all, even during that time, we always contributed actuarially required rate. But like Elizabeth said, the question is, how did we fund what we wanted to contribute? In ordinary times, we funded out of the general fund, like we're doing right now. During the recession, we had meetings exactly like this. We presented issue papers, exactly like we're doing here. And the manager made recommendations, and some of his recommendations were, for several years, to use the pension reserve fund. But again, we just used it to have an inflow into the general fund, so the general fund could then afford to make the actuarially required contribution rate. That's how we did it, and I've got all that information I can share.
And I would like that. And also, just the comparison of that 30 million we just discussed, percentage wise, how does that compare to 2011? Like, did, did they have that in 2011, a cushion like that? And if so, what was the decision making to have them utilize certain pots over other pots?
Our general fund balance has fluctuated over the years, kinda like the state general fund balance. Ours bottomed out in about 1993. Pretty much since that time, we've been growing it. And specifically to your question, in about 2009, our general fund reserve was somewhere in the neighborhood of $21 million, which was somewhere in the neighborhood of about 10% of our general fund. As Mr., as Councilmember Clay Combs, or Councilmember Clendenon, sorry, been a long day, I'm sure you guys are tired, I'm tired too. But as he noted, that's very important for our rating agencies, and 10% was a little on the lower threshold. So, we've strategically tried to increase that balance. And in fact, for the last 10 years or so, that balance has increased both in nominal terms and in percentage terms. Last year, our results are unaudited, but I think we ended last year at about $36 million, which, am I correct, Elizabeth? I think it's gonna be a little closer to about 14.5%. She indicated 12, I think it's actually closer to about 14.5. So, I don't know if that answered your question, but basically, it's grown from about 10% to 15% over the last 10 years, from about 20 to about 35 in nominal terms. But, final thing I'd tell you, Mayor, is, as we noted, it's important for our rating agencies. And 15% sounds like a lot, 35 million sounds like a lot, but in eyes of our rating agencies, that's really pretty skinny from their point of view.
Yeah, and part of my email was to figure out what those thresholds were with the rating agencies. So, I'd be interested in more information. 'Cause just like what the Councilmember Clendenon said, there's a cost to utilizing money that you have saved. And, you know, I think that if we are at all looking into some of our reserves, then it'd be interesting to know what those thresholds are, to make sure that it's done responsibly.
What would be helpful, too, to include some of the comments from Moody's and Standard and Poor's, there were some years we were bad, 'cause we were adding to the general fund balance, and they were criticizing us because we weren't increasing it. To offset an increase, right, so, yeah. We'll go ahead and provide it, I think it's pretty, it's good information.
Yeah, I mentioned there's qualitative and quantitative. I can tell you what the Moody's and Standard and Poor's charts are, and they bump us up on a qualitative basis. Because if you look quantitatively where our balances are, our rating is higher than what it should be. So, they're, they're giving us a qualitative benefit from what their quantitative model says, but I can share that with you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I sat in on one of their ratings calls one time, I think actually, I think maybe I sat in on two or three of them. And it's very interesting. So, if you have the opportunity, that, whenever we sell, again, it gives you a sense, 'cause you actually get to hear Moody's and all of them talk about us, and not just read it in the report. So, I encourage you to take advantage of it.
Sounds like a call I need some coffee with, but definitely...
Oh, no, I thought, well, maybe you did, but, you know, I was a business professor, so...
Right, right. No, it sounds fascinating. I would appreciate any, not only the reports that you're willing to explain to me, but also if there are calls or other continuing education opportunities. And the crutch of it, and I'm trying to articulate this correctly, is if we were to, Detroit's mayor's looking at, is looking at reserves to help out before they do any layoffs, you know, or any cuts to programs. So, I'm trying to just get the information to figure out how, what would be the most responsible way going forward? If you have a savings account, you know, what is the responsible way to utilize some of that savings without having unintended consequences, which would be obviously our credit rating, or, you know, or any of the other triggers that would cost us financially?
And I think that that would be actually a great analysis to look at. You know, Bob, we went, we got through 2011, 2012, 2013, and beyond. When the state of California had cities that were going bankrupt, our state had a financial credit rating downgrade, and the United States did as well. And we were able to keep our credit rating as high as well it will get, considering some of the financing that we have to do with specials. That's gonna be pretty important to me, because being able, adding more yellow lines to this list, I really don't wanna see that happen if we don't have that, if we can help it. If borrowing money starts to cost too much, we could be in big trouble, so...
So, oh, well, we already talked through these, so, okay. So, this is the budget calendar. We've got two slides here that'll take us through when the budget is adopted on August 11th. One thing that I think is very important this year is to provide feedback as we close them each month in the financial system on what revenue, that chart that we had with the table with the X's and the big revenue sources. So, April revenue, we'll know that by the second week of May, which will be around the same time that, of potential budget retreat. And the other things, well, we'll have follow up on the items that you all have talked about today. And then also, on the concepts from departments, as they've been considering how to assist with balancing the budget. In early June is usually when we go out to the dabs and present preliminary information on the budget. And then, June 8th is, will be important, that week will receive revenue for May. Or we can report back on revenue that we received in May. But that will be for sales tax. So, on May 25th, we'll get sales tax for the period ending March 25th. So, it won't really show us the whole picture. In June, preliminarily, we'll do online resident engagement, which will be important this year because of social distancing. And July 5th, we'll get June revenue. So, the first full month of sales tax that we'll be getting, that reflects the stay-at-home order, we will be getting the same week that we plan on printing the budget. So, that's why we kind of, we have to use these economic indicators to be making decisions. Then the week of July 13th, that's when the proposed budget is presented. There's the first public hearing. And just a reminder, that is the meeting where the city council sets the maximum taxes to be levied for the next year, and then authorizes the publication of notice. August 4th is a second public hearing that's voluntary on our part, it's an additional public hearing. And then August 11th is the final public hearing in the adoption of the 2021, 22 operating budget. So, you'll be seeing more of us.
So, just, I don't know if I missed this slide, but the information on page 15 for staff wages?
Oh, sorry, let's go back to, where's that?
So, I asked for a total of all the positions and money for everyone who makes $100,000 or more, including the mayor, in wages, so I can somewhat calculate what the cost of living, or the raises, would look like if those were cut for the last few years? What is the typical cost of living, or typical raise? I mean, I'm not looking for, for, you know, information that shouldn't be shared publicly, but it's 4%. If we cut 4% out of everyone at our, at our organization who makes $100,000 or more, I think that's $435,000. But I don't know how that 4% is that...
Typically, what we've done in the past, when we've had wage freezes, is we keep people at the same wage rate that they're at, at the time when the wage freeze occurs, and then they don't receive the increase in the future. So, rather than rolling back, they, it's, the future increase doesn't occur. In most cases, when it comes to increases, we follow what's in the union agreements. So, our represented employees earn 2.5% merit step increases every year, and then the GPAs, which is the general pay adjustments, are based on what's in the union contract. And those have, in the recent past, the last six, eight years, we, what?
One and a half.
One and a half, yeah. So, but there was a time when these things were suspended, excuse me.
And council as well, we did not separate ourselves out from that policy. We also took wage freeze as well, along with the rest of the employees. Bob, I believe, even when you were due your contract, you voluntarily froze your wages, so...
And that's one of the, yeah, what I'm wondering, maybe the freezing pay increases, but I wanna target people making $100,000 or more, so we're not targeting people who make $40,000. You know, I think that there is a, there could be a more systematic approach to ensure that those who get paid less on our, in our organization, don't feel more of a sting than those who get paid more. So, I'd be interested to know what the numbers have turned out for only people $100,000 or more, and that includes myself. Freezing future raises, what would help us as far as filling in this hole here?
Yeah, it just would depend, it, you know, it's, would also depend on what's in the union contracts, and some of those are open right now, and some of them, we're under contract already for 2021.
Okay, well, what makes sense? Obviously, if you can't do it, then...
Yeah, I mean, it all, it really all depends. I mean, for exempt employees who are not represented, it really, it's just, it's a big, it depends.
Okay, thank you.
So...
That's all we have.
That's all, yeah, we'll see you next time. So...
Are there any other issues, any questions, anything you want us to pursue?
Yeah, so I had three things, I'll go in order, from easiest to more detail. So, the first is, and our next retreat, could, Bob, you possibly be over here, so I don't have to turn around? Just makes it easier. Second, could we have a report of what it would look like to, you know, I appreciate everything our employees have done and contributed to that pool. And I know, Bob, that you mentioned in your email, there may be some opportunity later to maybe discuss this, but what it would look like, a dollar amount, if we tried to renegotiate benefits back, just from them being nice right now, contributing to the pool, but maybe giving them their vacation time back, or what that might look like? Just a report about it. And then, lastly, I guess because we figured out on July 5th, we'll get June revenue, if that's, what happens to our whole process if, one, the impact is not as significant as we thought, and we're going ahead with presenting to the community deeper cuts? But then also, what happens if it's like way worse?
Yeah, I think that if...
If I could.
What?
I'd like to answer.
Yeah, you, go, jump in.
Well, we're gonna give you this list, and you're gonna just write on it. What I wanna do is give you a series of decision packages, and we're gonna prioritize that. And then, we'll lock in at what we think our, what our best estimate is at that period of time. And then what we'll do is we'll have restorations, and then we'll also have further cuts that'll give us that flexibility. But you'll have approved those packages and the dollar amounts in advance. Okay?
So, Bob, do you have an estimation on what the, the potential calculation would be if we were to receive funds from, from either the last stimulus, or the one that is possibly getting through Congress now? Is there any, any projected timeframe that you believe will have a better understanding of, you know, what the cuts will actually have to be?
Great question, Mayor. In terms of the bill that's under consideration now, that'll provide us no relief. Cities and counties were left out of that bill. So, there's some consideration for the... So, there's some consideration for the next bill, having cities and states and counties included, we have no idea if that's going to happen or not.
So, the current bill, you said, left cities and counties, are you talking about the one that already passed?
No, the one that's, no, the one that's under consideration now. The one that was passed had money allocated to the state, as we know, and then also direct allocations to Johnson County and to Sedgwick County. Sedgwick has indicated that they're willing to consider sharing some of that revenue with us, and once we come up with a mutually agreeable formula. The problem today is that, as, and this is what I referenced in the council meeting, the federal legislation does not allow us to use that to offset any revenue shortfalls, so it's only for COVID-19-related expenses, and Treasury is still providing guidance on that. There's been a plea with Treasury to, to relax that restriction and allow some backfill of lost revenues. If that's not the case, then probably all we're going to be looking at are additional public safety expenses that were incurred, even go so far as to say it can't be expenses that were previously budgeted, these have to be expenses that go against that million-dollar account that your council has established. So, let's assume, maybe we get to the million dollars in additional expense, that's not, that's not factored into the 10 million, I don't believe, the 10 million's only on the revenue shortfall side, so, worst-case scenario, we don't get any help from the previous, we, bill in terms of your $10 million deficit. We're working hard to get a favorable Treasury ruling that would allow us to offset some of that, but...
So, we still wait on that ruling, so...
Yeah, the whole nation is, that's the problem.
But, so even our first responders who are doing overtime because of COVID, that type of stuff doesn't count?
If we can relate it, yeah, yes, if we can document that that's COVID-related, and the overtime expenses are greater than nor budgeted, I can recoup that, but that's not included in the 10 million deficit, that's above and beyond the 10 million.
Let's hope they get the next one right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I have just one more question and comment. Bob, you and your staff have done a really good job over the last few years in making sure that we have public comments, public hearings on the budget, and so I know you're looking at this, and we asked for the AG's direction on public comment today, I just want to encourage us to think about, you know, and I know you guys are, you know, what if we can't have a public hearing, how do we, as we normally do, the kind of normal public hearing that we've had, what are some of our backup plans? Because I think people, I think the public has come to rely on that, and, and I think we rely on it too, in terms of those public hearings.
Our most significant public response has been to the simulation and the city, the social media town hall. We have much greater reach through those than we have in terms of having people come to meetings, including DAB meetings, right? We get a little bit of input, but it's not representative of the community, but we still need to find an open forum type of approach in this, that's better than just submitting email comments.
Yeah, but even if it means two town halls or something, you know, I don't know what that looks like, but you're right, town halls are, they're very popular, and...
Dare I say, we at least have one evening meeting, you know, that would be a budget meeting for people.
I'm more concerned about the social distancing, and whether people can come into the chambers, that's what I'm more concerned about, if we get to a place where we can't do that, what do we do?
So, Bob, on June, the week of June 1st and 8th, when we do the DAB presentations, will they be talking about the budget simulator again? I know we did last year, but I have new DAB members, okay, just wanted to make sure. That I thought was very helpful, and then, what I found is that my DAB members were advocates for it, and I encourage them to get other people to participate, so, having the information as a friendly reminder, but then for new members would be great, so, thank you.
Thank you all, is that everything?
Thank you.
All right, we're adjourned.
Stay safe.